Going to call to order the December 16, 2014, city council meeting. Would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Council Grant.
Here.
Council Butterfield.
Here.
Council Langer.
Here.
Council Clark.
Here.
Council King.
Here.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes? Okay, going on the consent agenda. Approval of November 15, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Approval of November 17, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Approval of November 18, 2014, city council minutes. Approval of December 2, 2014, city council minutes. Resolution 2014-075 approving the city recorder's canvassing of returns of the November 4, 2014, Washington County election and directing the city recorder to enter the results into the record. Resolution 2014-076 forming a technical advisory committee, a community advisory committee for the Sherwood West preliminary concept plan and establishing the appointment process for the members of the committee.
Move consent.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Presentations. We're going to start off with Jayden Homer and Kyle Homer, who just became Eagle Scouts. Would they please come forward? Okay, would you guys explain what you did for your Eagle Scout projects, for how you earned your Eagle Scout process, please?
Uh, so, yeah, my Eagle project, I designed and installed shelving at the Good Neighbor Center in Tigard. And, uh, yeah, that's what I did.
Great. What'd you do for your project?
Um, I remodeled their garden area and then installed benches for the people there.
Same place?
Same place, yeah.
Well, great. We really appreciate your volunteering and helping and getting them very proud to get your Eagle Scout, both of you. And we have certificate of achievements for both of you, and I will come down there and give them to you.
You don't have name tags, so one of you has got to be one of them.
All right, we have another Eagle Scout presentation. Mitchell Gents. I haven't seen you since you were like that big.
Yeah.
So, what was your project on?
So, my project was, Washington County Sheriff's Office had K-9 obstacles that were breaking down and rotten, and so they called me up and said that they wanted me to build some new K-9 obstacles for their K-9 competitions that they have every July. So, I took their old K-9 obstacles, brought them over to the Sherwood PD, replicated them, got all the wood, built them together, and they packed them up, and they've used them the past two years now for the K-9 obstacles that are held in July.
Well, great. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I also have a certificate, and thank you for your taking the time and doing that for the sheriff's department. So, the K-9 programs are really important. So, thank you. I don't know if Alice is here tonight or not. Alice, are you here? Oh, come here, Alice. Couldn't see in the back. You and Phil, come on up. Go ahead and sit down. I want everybody to know in the audience, if these two people wouldn't do what they do, we wouldn't have the Robin Hood Festival. They do so much work for the Robin Hood Festival. It's about time, I think, that we really recognize them here and show our appreciation. They just volunteer so many hours, it's unbelievable. And I've lived in town almost 20 years, and they're always working on it every time I see them. And it's starting now for next year, and they do the Christmas, all the Christmas events too. So, you two are the two hardest workers I've seen in this town in volunteering, and I really do appreciate it. And I wanted to give each one of you a plaque for all you've done for us, and thanks again, and I know you'll do it for another 100 years. Phil, why don't you tell us what you do, just time-wise, how many hours it takes and all that, just a little information for the public.
It's seasonal, but we just wrapped up the tree line ceremony, and the day of the event itself, we start loading up the U-Haul about 11:30 and close up about 9 o'clock at night that night. I'm fortunate, my son went through scouting, and I've been able to pull my son's troop, Troop 224, who's all back here tonight.
That's right, for the whole meeting.
Yep, yep, the whole meeting. They're working on their citizenship and the community merit badge tonight, and one of the requirements is to sit through a full council meeting and also do eight volunteer hours, which they work hard. It's a great tool because they get to see, just like all our nonprofits and volunteers, there's very few people that step forward to help out and put on the event. So, it's a great opportunity for these kids to see what it takes to put on an event. So, the summertime, goodness. Usually, my wife goes to bed at 9 o'clock or so, and Alice is calling me at 9:30, bugging me, "Have you done this yet, or have you done that yet?" So, she keeps after me. So, we put many hours, come March, April, May, putting it together.
Once again, I just, I thank you for all you do for the city.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Start with citizen comments. Tammy Stephens.
Tammy Stephens, 3617 Southwood Cross in Sherwood. Okay. There. I'm here on behalf of Sherwood Bowman Football. We would, Coach Law was not able to make it tonight, so I'm here to thank all the outgoing counselors, but especially Counselor Butterfield for all the work he's done for youth sports and high school sports, and we really appreciate the anonymous hours that he's given, countless hours that he's given to the program, and we just wish him well and thank him for his time.
Kurt couldn't hear me. I didn't have it on, I guess.
Well, the last meeting of the year, and a lot of things are happening at the city council level, just like in Washington, DC. I'm a little concerned, and I need some clarifications, if you would, on resolution 2014-078. Correct me if I'm wrong, is the primary beneficiary of that resolution, council member, Mr. Matt Langer?
Point of order.
Yeah, you can come back up when we're talking about 59, if that's better for you. Probably be more. We'll be talking about it then, so then you can comment after...
Yeah, that's a public hearing.
No, it's not.
Any amendment to supplemental budget is a public hearing.
If you want to come back up then, that's fine, or you can talk now. It's your choice. Would you rather wait until you have more information?
I might not be awake by the time you get to that.
Okay, go ahead then.
Okay. I've been up since 5 o'clock and taking care of kids. I am a little bit concerned that a sitting member of council is involved in a last-minute budget appropriation to the tune of almost $1 million. I would much have preferred for public transparency that this sort of item was prepared for the council and the public with a little bit more lead time. It seems, I don't know if I want to use the word shady, but it just seems not quite proper. So, I would hope that council members, they take into account that it looks like a self-serving thing when it's dealt with in that manner, whether it is a correct reimbursement or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Naomi Bello.
Well, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Naomi Bello, and I wanted to thank you, Mayor Bill, on your last council meeting ever, unless you decide to run again, which we all, of course, are hoping you'll do. But we hope you enjoy your retirement and enjoy all those cookies in there because we know you'll need them, and we just really appreciate all you've done. And I too am also concerned about the $890,000 being given to the Langers later in this meeting. It's my understanding that there is a road put through to Home Depot and that they're being given money. I don't, that's all I know, so if you could clarify and explain that to us, that'd be great.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to mention is, there was a really nice article in the Gazette. As Kristanna Clark's campaign manager, I was very happy to read this. Finally, it was clarified publicly that, let's see here, it says Oregon Secretary of State's Election Division has found insufficient evidence that Sherwood Mayor-elect Kristanna Clark filed a false statement in the state voter's pamphlet during her November election bid. So, as we know, Bill Butterfield's wife had tried to slander her in the campaign, and I'm glad that's all clarified now, and we're very excited about you serving, Mayor Clark. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Middleton, over here, I just want to remind you that under the council rules, the citizen comment is reserved for items not otherwise on the agenda, and the supplemental budget is scheduled for a public hearing.
I know, but he wanted to, he was going to leave, so I'm going to give him the opportunity to speak.
Okay, that, thank you.
Nancy Taylor.
Both of the last two witnesses testified on, both of the last two witnesses.
Yeah, the last one, she's just going to hang around. Nancy Taylor?
I'm going to testify on that.
Okay.
Always.
Our clause. Oh, Jim, where are you? Did you want to testify during the area of, which one did you want to testify on? Well, then, do you want to wait until we discuss the, both those issues?
No. Well, the court, what I want to bring up now is undue influence and improper use of discretionary authority.
Okay.
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. As you know, for some time now, I've been concerned about what I see as improper use of discretionary authority. Now, first of all, you have to understand that the bulk of the laws you operate under are police powers. You take a normal activity and you turn the penalties for violating it into a crime. The discretionary power of when and where that will be used centers on Mr. Cream. He is our city attorney. If he decides to prosecute someone at a particular time and someone, and not another person, it rests with what's called the discretionary. That's a bar matter. What's not a matter is undue influence. Now, recently, Mr. Grant, I had the lady that cleans your house tell me she could park on my property on McVal. We're going to report that to the proper authorities because it seems like she's got mixed up with the fact that you direct the police how to give tickets. Now, there's another more interesting thing. Councilman Henderson's mother lives in her property, that just before the critical moment on the election, Ms. Haiduk made the decision to cancel an agreement with me, regardless of the impact on the property, to stop allowing that no parking zone for our construction. Now, I'm seeing this pattern, and it's now gotten down to all levels, where you actually think you can talk to the police, you can talk to the staff members, and you can identify the bad guys. Now, please note why I'm telling you this, because I intend to forward this, obviously, to Secretary of State on their request, because this is a felony if you use that improperly. You don't tell somebody they could park on somebody's property. Now, as long as I've got a percipient witness, I feel pretty good about it. You don't try to swing an election by proving how much power you have to increase parking during that. Regardless of what your intent is, there's an appearance there. You don't decide to prosecute somebody that's extremely ill when you have another opportunity of equal merit that would stand in court, but if you knew you can get a quick win by threatening to kill somebody, putting a pressure on them, you know the other side's going to fold up. That's not allowed in America. Now, why I'm telling you this, because this has gone on, and give you a typical example. Let's talk about your building department. I knew exactly what was going to happen when I started building again. We would look at the broad issue. The issue you're building, Hartman, has, is my plans to code? Have I licensed people? And have we followed the code meticulously? Anything else is ultra varies. I'm sorry if they don't like my contractors, and they disagree that I'm going to fire contractors. It's none of their damn business. Now, why would they even want to get out of that when the state officials called them and told them, "Stay away from it"? All you're doing is checking, I'll tell you why, because you poisoned the whole well. And it gets back to something I think you might like that I find very amusing. Some time ago, many years ago, I was dealing with Frank Soule, the head of the American Planning Association, and he brought up this word stakeholder. There was a communist Chinese in the room, and he said, "The only stakeholder you have in a police state is the state." Ladies and gentlemen, that's what your staff has been turned into. The laws do not apply equally. Your attorney uses his discretion when to do it, when not to prosecute. One case is different than another because somebody contributes to the arts, and you better back off before you get yourself in a train wreck with some of the authorities in this state because they're starting to look at this state more and more, this town more and more carefully. It's appalling what we've done here. Thousands, millions of dollars, we can't get a check on in the budget. We don't know where we stand when we fight for a permit because we're not a good guy, we're not going to get the permit. Time up? Thanks. The whole point is your discretionary authority is used to the point, we can't do anything, and he's going to try to tell you different, but he and I'll have our differences in format where I need to go with this. But what you better get careful of is stay away from Gold's staff. Let him run them. There used to be a thing in the charter that if you talked to his staff, you had to resign. There was a reason for that, undue influence. There's a reason these attorneys and mayors took that out of the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Brad Turner.
Mayor, while Mr. Turner's coming up, we, you may have figured this out, we're using a timer over here now because that one has been not always working. Yeah, that's what, it was the dinging, so.
Sorry, kind of a packed house tonight.
That's all right.
I am a resident of Sherwood, have been for seven years. My name is Brad Turner, and I am a substitute teacher in Sherwood School District. I coached two sports at Sherwood High School. My wife coaches one, she's a full-time teacher at the high school, and I'm also a stay-at-home parent, so I wear a lot of hats. And one of the privileges I've had since I've been here in Sherwood and why I'm here tonight is to, it being the last night for Bill Butterfield on city council, I'm here to speak and just put some things on record that I think everybody should know about him. Sorry, my kids too.
That's, that's fine.
And, like I said, I wear a lot of hats, right? About him and his character. And, you know, sometimes when people are successful, a lot of people say a lot of different things about people. It's not fair, and a lot of it's not true. And I just want to get a couple of things on record about Bill. Since I've been here in Sherwood, okay, since '07, Bill, on his own time, not receiving any compensation, and just being a good citizen, has taken his own company and his own workers and himself and wired the football stadium, okay, which is also used for lacrosse, soccer, track and field. Okay? Wired and did all the electrical work for the track shed that was put in, okay? And on top of doing all of that, he even hurt his hand in the process and had to get stitches, but he continued to work until the job was done, again, not being compensated. For the football team, he's volunteered for over a decade, never receiving compensation one time. He's also built a ball machine that we still use today in practice all the time, and his two sons play at U of O. And U of O being the powerhouse that it is, okay, and having Heisman Trophy winner this year and hopefully a national championship, okay, it carries a lot of weight. And so, he was a volunteer at their Nike Oregon football camp, and he got a lot of our football players into that camp. And we have football players that played college football today because Bill was nice enough to get them into that football camp. Brandon Blackshire played football at Columbia University in the Ivy Leagues because of the work that Bill did with him and his position, and also getting him into a national camp, a national combine to be recognized. The smoke that everybody sees in the fog when the football players run out before games, okay, that whole tunnel, the strobe light, the smoke, the fog, all of that is done by Bill on his own time, on his own dime, with other people to volunteer, and I'm one of the people that helps him do that. He does it because he loves kids, and he doesn't do it because he wants to be recognized. No one would even know it, but I want to make sure that people recognize the things that Bill does. Bill helped to create the lacrosse program, which a ton of high school athletes now have a choice, instead of just track and baseball, they can play lacrosse, and then they have year-round lacrosse now too because of Bill. And a lot of people say, "Well, great, so he's really lobbied for lacrosse and a lot of the football player programs, or a lot of the football programs, youth football, et cetera." But Bill's also lobbied and really tried to get a skate park in town here, so the skater kids, the kids that maybe don't fit into that mold of a football player and athlete have another place to go that's safe. Every year, Bill spends 20 hours or more creating a haunted house for the community for anybody that shows up to go into his home. And he runs that on Halloween night, and his whole family dresses up and scares the heck out of everybody and gives out candy, and it has everything from strobe lights to fog machines to pyrotechnics, and Bill does it all in his own time and his own dime for the community because he cares about people. Bill serves in his church, and you can say what you want about the LDS church, but it's a lay ministry, okay, it's a lay clergy, and to serve in the church takes a lot of time. Okay, so on top of Bill's own company and corporation that he runs, on top of all the service that he does with all the youth programs and being here on city council, he serves in his church, and he does so honorably, and again, without being compensated.
Okay, your four minutes is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yep.
Thanks.
I will. Personally, for me and my family, Bill's family's welcomed us into his home, and instead of taking toys for his grandkids to goodwill, he gave them to my family. We basically live on one income, and Bill's done a lot for my family. They've always allowed us to be in their home, and it's tragic that he's not going to be on city council anymore. I don't idolize Bill, but every once in a while in life, he gives something that's a really great example, and Bill is that in Sherwood, and I hope that he continues to serve.
Thank you.
That was poetic. That was great. I am the son-in-law of Bill Butterfield, and publicly I would like to say how much I have appreciated his example over the years of him serving here and the abilities that he's been able to dedicate, the time and effort and energies that have gone into being away from some of the family things that we've gotten to do, and we've supported that, and he has supported us. Also want to go on record just to say that I love him and appreciate him and all that he does for my family and his own family. I've seen a lot of service that has happened in this community, and the things that we have talked about privately and the love that he has for, for this community, and I've seen that firsthand behind the, behind the closed doors that not everybody gets to see. And just wanted to say that his daughter, Sandra, who couldn't be here this evening, loves you very much and appreciates that, and we're glad to have you back.
Ben Butterfield? Oh, there he is.
Turn that on? All right. Hey, everyone. Yeah, Bill's my dad, and I just want to come down and say a few words as well because I'm glad to have him back from city council. It'd be cool to hang out with him a little bit more, but I could go on for days of what he does for me in my life, but it's countless how many times whoever, whoever's in need, doesn't matter our family, anyone else's family, he will just stop and drop and sprint to their aid. And so, I just wanted to, I could, I could come here and he can tell me every day how proud he is of me, whatever I've done in my life, but I just want to say that I'm proud of him every day. And some people, like Brad said, he doesn't idolize him, but looks up to him very much, but he is my idol. And just wanted to say that he did an awesome job, and thank you guys for supporting him and everyone, and be able to hang out with you at home later. See ya.
Tracy Butterfield?
Oh, there we go. Sorry. I'm Tracy Butterfield, and of course, I'm the wife of Counselor Bill Butterfield, and seeing as how this is his last meeting, I wanted to share some comments in regards to his service. But before I do, I wanted to thank Counselor Grant and Counselor Langer for their service as well. Seeing things from an insider's perspective, I truly understand what you've been through and the hours that you've given to this community, and I thank you so much. In the midst of this busy time of year and just the everyday ups and downs of life as a mom, grandmother, and daughter and wife, I've experienced some frustration and a lot of stress lately, but this morning I was reminded by a really good friend to dwell on my successes because there are many. And this got me to thinking about my husband's journey serving on city council. He's experienced more stress, frustration, and disappointment than any one person should have to, especially one that is serving for free and with righteous intentions. Bill has been in service of this community for over 20 years in one way or another, and while I've watched people try to manipulate, bully, or spew lies about him, he's stayed the course and has many successes that he can dwell on. He would never be okay with taking sole credit for any one thing because he's a team player, but he has been the driving force behind many project in Sherwood because he has a way about him that just gets things done. I'm not going to recite the obnoxious list of accomplishments because that would be boring. he's stayed the course and has many successes that he can dwell on. He would never be okay with taking sole credit for any one thing because he's a team player. But he has been the driving force behind many projects in Sherwood because he has a way about him that just gets things done. I'm not going to recite the obnoxious list of accomplishments because that would be boring and he would be embarrassed. But the lighted fields that serve hundreds of kids every day and the contribution he's made to move the community center along were just two very small examples. Being able to laugh at ridiculous situations has really helped our family get through the muddy waters of public service. Recently, Bill was accused of making big bucks from being on City Council. And while I often tease him to show me the money, I did sit down and do a bit of conservative math. In business, we say that time is money. So I put the average rate that he charges per hour in his business and use that in my calculation. I took into account the time he spends in meetings as well as the time he's away from his job and family, physically working on something for the city or school district, like Brad said. Just over the last four years alone, if he would have charged his going rate, he's done over $300,000 of work for this community and $1.5 million over the last 20 years. This, of course, does not count all the volunteer hours that he spent coaching, which would definitely put him up over $2 million. So, prior to winning the City Council seat, however, I will say that his company did have one contract with the city on this fountain over here, and they did profit about $10,000. So to be fair, I need to include that calculation. And so, he's leaving this really great job, $1,490,000 in the hole. So, good job, honey. In all seriousness, though, I just want people to know that while he comes off as kind of a tough guy, we can see by the tears that he has a kind heart and a soft heart, and he desires to give back and to serve others without anything in return. He prays for guidance and he prays for each and every one of you. I've never known him to say no when someone asks for his help. And even in the eye of the storm of controversy swirling around the city, he was a voice of reason and understanding. And I just want him to know of my love for him and my appreciation for all that he's done, not just for the community, but for our family and for me and for always supporting me in every way that he can. And I think this community has been very lucky to have you serving in it. And I know that we love Sherwood, so we're going to be here for a long time to come, and he'll find other ways to serve. So, thank you, Bill, and thank you to everyone, actually, that serves on the council because I know it's not an easy job.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go into new business. Resolution 2014-077, Adopting an amended City of Sherwood Home Rule Charter approved by the city electors at November 4, 2014 election.
Mayor and Council, I'll be brief because I think there's a couple of other items that folks want to get to. This resolution basically is adopting a new charter that there were five charter amendments on the November ballot. And the new charter will go into effect January 1, 2015. Couple bits of important bits. I think the most important, I think, that the public will see is our ordinance process will be different, starting in January. So instead of ordinances normally being on a one-night approval process, we, with the new charter, will be spread over a first reading and then a second reading normally, which is really, I think, meant for the public to be more involved. When we pass an ordinance where basically the council is adopting local law, and to slow that process down and to allow more public input was the intent of the Charter Committee, and the citizens agreed with that. That's a fairly normal process in other cities, but it will be new for the new council come January. We are already planning the agendas for, for the new year. And Councilor and soon-to-be Mayor Clark and I have worked on a work session for the new council at the second January meeting to discuss the new charter and make sure that, that we've got our ducks in a row in terms of knowing what will take place. So, I can answer any specific questions, but we've had a number of items related to this. This is just the final process where you accept and adopt the charter. So, with that, I'll take any questions?
No questions, or do you have one question? Go ahead.
I have two questions. Under the amended charter, there is, I don't know if you want to, which page you want to look at, but under Section 7 of Counsel, it says, "A majority of counsel may cause an item to be added to the agenda of a future meeting." So, in January, when we swear in, there will be six of us. So, a majority of counsel would not be three, it would be four, correct? So, three is not a quorum with a council of six, yes? Because obviously, that's not a majority.
That's correct, right.
So, if three of us are seen in the same place, we won't be violating public meeting law by
Right, that's correct.
being at the same event or attending a meeting together.
And even if you're at the same event, as long as you're not, you know, deliberating, discussing public business, it's not a violation.
If there's a majority of us.
Right.
Okay. And the other thing, it says under that same section, under Counsel, it says, Item 10, "In January, after each general election, the council shall adopt council rules by resolution." Are we going to do that in January? Because that's what it says we're going to do.
I know that the new council, like I said, we're planning a work session to go over the council rules on that January 20th. We will also potentially have a council retreat in January. So I think any changes that may come to the council rules would come out of that in January.
Do we plan to do that in January?
Yes.
Okay. Since those are new, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 2014-077, adopted, adopting an amended, amended City of Sherwood Home Rule Charter as provided by the city electors at the November 4, 2014 election.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, staff.
Going back on, now we have public hearings. Resolution 2014-073, Extending the Area 59 reimbursement district by five years to March 4, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And this is a continuation of the hearing that you had on November 18. In your packet is just a brief reminder of that, what you, what you heard at the last meeting. You received in your packets a letter from Kelly Hosseini with Miller Nash, who represents the school district. And then we also had a revision to the proposed resolution to primarily reflect the continuation of the hearing and that if you make a decision to extend the reimbursement district, that it's reflecting all of the information that you received in both verbally and in writing. Also, since the packet went out, you also received via email a letter from Nancy Mandel, David Mandel and Dean Wurst. And those, I believe you have in front of you this evening, but those are part of the record as well.
So, Mayor, did you see the suggested format that Julia emailed before we start? And I'm guessing from the look, you did not. So, Julia, can you propose, once again, in terms of the structure?
Yeah, at the, at the last meeting, there was a little, you know, little bit of on-the-fly confusion as far as how it was going to run. And you gave the school district 20 minutes, and then you gave Mr. Rankin, representing several property owners, 20 minutes. Because you've already heard from, from, you know, a majority of people and you've gotten written comments, our recommendation is that you do the four-minute testimony, that you not allow people to defer their time to other people and then just take them in the order that they came in. But that's ultimately up to council and how you want to run the meeting.
Well, I agree with that. Does everybody else agree with that? Okay. And we can reopen the public hearing? Before we get to, yeah, I know, I just, oh, go ahead, you can go ahead for that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead with.
The public reading, no.
It's not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
This is a continuation.
We heard a lot of testimony last time. And right now, if everybody testifies, we have 31 people wanting to testify. That's well over two hours. I'm asking you, if you could, please just don't keep repeating the same thing over and over. If you have some new ideas, we have a ton that's been sent to us in writing, and we've read it all. Obviously, you're allowed to come up and testify if you would like, but please be, please know that we've heard a lot of this. And if, unless you have something new, just, you can come up and just give a few minutes. But if we listen to everybody in here, like I say, it's going to take well over, probably closer to two and a half hours. And so, we can go ahead and start. And let's see, I have a, Mr. Rankin, did you want to speak for your group? Or did you want everybody to come up individually?
I'd like, Your Honor, to speak for the group.
Four minutes.
Pardon me?
You can have four minutes to speak for the group, yes.
Four minutes for the whole group.
Because we have 31 people that want to testify, and that's just...
I understand. Who are the other 31 people?
I've got, you'll know them when they all start coming up. And then on your group, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So, they can come up and testify individually, but we're not going to defer time to that. We all agreed on that just a minute ago. So if you'd like to come up, and if they all want to testify, and it's all, they can. Everybody has a right to testify. But please understand, if we hear the same thing 31 times...
Yes, I understand, Mr. Rankin. I think what I'd like to propose is that I go at the end
That's fine.
of the presentation.
Sure.
So I can hear the testimony of the school district. They've got some additional testimony. Usually, we do it in an order of applicant and then opponents and then new parties in a public hearing setting. And I did that the last time.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we'll start then with Kelly Hosseini? Did I get it close?
Hosseini.
Hosseini, okay.
Good evening. Kelly Hosseini with Miller Nash. I'm a lawyer and I represent the Sherwood School District. Back in 2006 and 2007, when Sherwood School District was working with the city to get the two new schools in Area 59 approved, it became clear that the most efficient way to go about serving the new schools with infrastructure was to front-load all of the infrastructure for the entire area. That was close to $4 million of infrastructure that needed to be built. The new schools needed about $2 million of that. And the rest of it would be needed to serve all of the new subdivisions and other development on the remaining private property. If the district had not come in and front-loaded all of that infrastructure, the developers of the benefited properties would have had to do so. I will tell you that developers do not expect to get infrastructure for free. The cost of infrastructure is built into their pro formas when they cost out a development. Would they make more money if they didn't have to pay for infrastructure? Absolutely, but they don't realistically expect that they won't have to. Infrastructure is expensive, there's no getting around it. In fact, since the district built the infrastructure that it did as part of this reimbursement district, the cost of constructing infrastructure has increased by about 12%. And this information can be found in the memo that I submitted this evening. You should all have a copy from our engineer, Ben Austin. So had the district not built this infrastructure in 2008, and if the developers of the Mandel property, for example, had to build the infrastructure today, it would cost, on average, about 12% more. It's not likely going to get any cheaper to build infrastructure in the future either. As also noted in Mr. Austin's memorandum, construction costs for this type of infrastructure tend to increase every year, and his firm expects construction costs to increase at a greater pace going forward than they have since 2008. It's also important to understand that the reimbursement district doesn't even represent all of the costs that the district incurred in building this infrastructure. No reimbursement was allowed for legal expenses, design engineering, financing costs, permits or fees required for construction permits. The cost to a private developer constructing this infrastructure would include all of those costs. Yet, private developers are not going to have to incur any of them or otherwise pay for them because the infrastructure's already there and the district already paid for that. The $1.7 million that's owed to the district is taxpayer money. Taxpayers are paying off the general obligation bond that the district used to finance capital projects like Edie Ridge and Laurel Ridge. Both the city council and the school board have an obligation to the taxpayer to be good stewards of that money. I don't think the taxpayers would approve of just giving a few property owners a huge windfall without having had a fair shot at getting the money back. Earlier this year, this council unanimously approved a code amendment to allow that to happen. This council also set out two approval criteria that an extension would be required to meet. Your staff have found that the district has met those approval criteria. Contrary to what the Mandel property owners have argued, the approval criteria have nothing to do with depreciation, third-party contracts or the personal effect on the Mandels if the development of their property has to pay for the infrastructure that serves it. The approval criteria require a showing of good cause and value to the affected properties. And those criteria are fair considerations for this extension, and they have been met. I will also note that despite the representation of the Mandel property owners, there were no guarantees or promises made that the reimbursement district would never be extended. There were assumptions made about how long the reimbursement district would last, and those assumptions came from the city's code, which only allowed 10 years for a reimbursement district. But when this reimbursement district was formed, no one foresaw the years of recession in which the district and the taxpayers basically had no chance of getting the money back. All the district is asking for is that fair shot. That's what the five years represents. The district respectfully requests, then, that council approve this extension.
Thank you. Mark Christie?
Got to get my glasses on so I can see. It's heck getting old. Okay, there we go. Thank you for your service to the taxpayers of Sherwood and the Sherwood School District. We are truly fortunate to have dedicated, dedicated mayor, council members, school board, superintendent, mutual staff over the years that focus on being wise stewards of the monies that our taxpayers entrust to us. As many of you know, you honored me on June 19, 2012 with a certificate of appreciation for my leadership, devotion and public service to the Sherwood School District and Sherwood community for my 15 years of service from 1997 to 2012. During those 15 years of service, I had the honor of serving as a construction board liaison on the $98 million bond that was overwhelmingly approved, 61%, by the taxpayers of the Sherwood School District. One of the key factors in that approval for the largest capital construction bond in Sherwood history was trust. Trust that the commitments we made during the bond campaign to be transparent, open and inclusive, involving community and all stakeholders, and equally to be wise stewards of the monies the taxpayers entrusted to us. This was and is still our promise. There is no question that the district needed, district need for additional land to build new schools and metro set aside of Area 59 to build those schools gave the property owners a substantial increase in property values virtually overnight. As an example, the Mandel property was valued at $135,000 an acre outside of the UGB, but ballooned to $400,000 per acre as soon as it was brought into the UGB. That's a 300% increase in property value and all because the district needed to bring property in for, for a new school site. There was no other reason Area 59 was brought into the UGB. The district paid almost $2 million to the Mandels for the property the district needed. The addition of the Mandel property to the UGB also allows the Mandels to develop the rest of it for housing at a significant profit, which the Mandels would not have had the opportunity to do but for the new school need. The reimbursement district is the perfect example of our collective responsibility as elected leaders to protect the taxpayers' monies that have been spent on a portion of those total infrastructure costs associated with development of this project. Approximately $1.5 million of uncollected infrastructure tax dollars that would be used for other construction projects that will be talked about later in testimony. You have outlined, and the district has met the criteria for a five-year extension of the reimbursement district. City staff has recommended the extension. I look forward to your approval tonight of the five-year extension of the district's Area 59 reimbursement district. Thank you again for your time and service to all the taxpayers of Sherwood. Thank you.
Kevin Noreen?
Good evening, Kevin Noreen. I also served on the school board during the construction and at this time when the reimbursement district was created. One thing that I can give you some testimony on specifically is that I had a role back when I worked at Clackamas County to actually oversee a reimbursement district program that Clackamas County had at that same time. And that truly is the intent behind a reimbursement district. The intent of, of why it was created is to share these costs that, that when certain developers have... have to go in and develop first, that they have an ability to recoup the percentage of the costs that others would have to pay. And in my line of work with Clackamas County, there was lots of those types of discussions, whether it be a local improvement district or reimbursement district, and those were those mechanisms used in order to spread out those costs. And that's simply where the district was in taking our steps, as Mr. Christie and Ms. Hosseini has already pointed out. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that I've had that experience in doing a reimbursement district, and that's exactly the intent behind creating one of those reimbursement districts. So, thank you.
Are we on? There we are. Well, good evening, Mayor Middleton and councilors. For the record, my name is Dan Jamison. I live at 23301 Southwest Redfern Place here in beautiful Sherwood. I believe it's been about five years since I've been before this august body, and I want to thank our exiting councilors for your great service to this city. It is greatly appreciated. I'm here tonight as a former superintendent of the Sherwood School District who had oversight of the bond and related projects. I offer support for extending the reimbursement district for five years. Now, throughout the process of locating and building the two schools, district representatives worked to maintain transparency and to build trust, not only throughout this community, but very explicitly and intentionally with property owners in Area 59. We made several key decisions to honor their wishes. While we wanted to locate the new schools closer to Edie Road at a far more economical cost to the district and taxpayers, we honored the consensus of area property owners by building the schools at the current location. The current site significantly increased our cost, especially with infrastructure, but it did accomplish several other very important things for this community. First of all, it allowed Loretta LaBonde to remain in her home, and we felt that was absolutely essential. It also required less of the land that Lola Bond was using for his nursery and his farming business. We wanted to honor his desires as well. Also, we had communication from property owners to the south that they did indeed want to develop, and quite frankly, the city-sponsored charrette process, which I began to participate in in 2005, clearly indicated that that was the consensus of the neighbors. We wanted to honor that. Now, a second thing that we did at the request of the Mandel family, we re-engineered, and we moved Copper Terrace, the connection with Edie Road, to the east. This is the bend that you and I see in that road today as you approach the schools. This was done with additional time and resources expended by the district. Now, along the way to accommodate neighbors and trust, we did a lot of little things. These may not seem like they're very large, but I think they're symptomatic of our commitment and our efforts to make sure that we were being good neighbors. We paid for one well. We dug another well. We paid for nursery stock. We paid for dirt. We moved and re-engineered a driveway to a better location for one of the properties on the southern end of Area 59, and we replaced six feet of notorious septic tank line that was getting in the way in order to make a property owner whole. Now, we did this to treat neighbors in a fair manner. As Mark Christie has shared, the district paid a very robust $400,000 per acre for property in Area 59. Now, I want to be a little bit more specific about this. The district paid $12 million for slightly less than 30 acres. Now, translated in a common sense for you and me, that means that any family with an interest of two and a half acres or more received a million dollars or more. Now, I share that as a matter of fact for you as decision-makers, that I believe there are no victims here, and we need to be clear about that. There are many, many other examples I could offer tonight, just as the district did everything in its power to make property owners whole and to treat them respectfully. The intent of the reimbursement district is to begin to make the district and taxpayers whole. While the $1.7 million does not begin to recapture all of the intended costs that we incurred with land development and infrastructure, it does maintain the sacred trust of those who voted to support that bond and the trust of those who continue to pay for it with their property taxes. I look forward to your approval of the five-year extension of the reimbursement district. It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Hecker?
Am I on? There, that's better. Okay, thanks. I'm Sue Hecker, and these are new for me, I'm getting used to this, but thanks for having me, and thanks for the opportunity to share some information with you tonight. So I'm just going to take a couple minutes to share some specifics about the 2006 bond measure passed by the Sherwood voters and the importance of that as it relates to the present day, and more specifically, the criteria recently set by the city council in regard to the extension of the Area 59 reimbursement district. Sherwood schools were bursting at the seams by 2005, so a long-range facility planning committee was formed, and recommendations were made to move forward with the plan to add much-needed classrooms for kids. In March of 2006, the Sherwood School District hired more information to survey registered voters in Sherwood to gauge the likelihood of passing a large bond for schools in Sherwood. The original survey included questions about building and expanding schools, along with a new high school stadium, a new performing arts complex at the high school, and a land bank to purchase land for future schools. The direction was very clear that the community supported schools and items most directly impacting the immediate needs of the children. The community understood that the $98 million bond was needed, but the expense of the stadium, a performing arts complex, and land was more than voters were willing or able to spend. Because of Sherwood's unprecedented growth during that period of time, there were already two recent bonds being paid for by the voters, and the addition of another $1.97 per thousand of assessed value would place Sherwood at the top of the list in the state for bond indebtedness at nearly $5 per thousand of assessed value. With the work of 208 adult volunteers over a period of nearly a year, Sherwood voters passed the largest bond on the ballot for schools that November, with the second highest passing rate at 61 percent in the state. Undoubtedly, the Sherwood community supports schools and trusts the district with their tax dollars. In return, this community expects to get the most for those precious dollars and holds the district accountable. The same is true in 2014. The Sherwood community places an extremely high priority on schools and wants the most for their tax dollars. As elected officials, we have the responsibility to use those dollars wisely. I believe that the city of Sherwood and the Sherwood School District have done a remarkable job over the last several years to use our monies wisely. Intergovernmental agreements and collaborations between the two organizations has consistently saved the taxpayers' money. In regard to the reimbursement district, the criteria you set a few months ago is clear: to show good cause to extend the reimbursement district and to show that the value of the improvements to the subject properties remains sufficient to warrant reimbursement. The district has met both criteria. The district has continued to work with all parties in good faith. The taxpayers, and most importantly, the children educated in this district, are owed their fair share of the investment the district made to Area 59 that clearly benefited the developers. They need to be repaid. The developers need to pay for those benefits, not the taxpayers, and certainly not the children of the Sherwood School District ultimately. I urge you to vote to extend the reimbursement district for five years. Thank you.
Phil Johansson?
I'd like to address three items tonight, two of which were raised in the hearing last month. The first relates to evidence. A statement was made that the district hadn't presented any evidence to support its position and satisfy the criteria. When I heard that, it took me back to when I was an auditor, and they used to describe the different levels of audit evidence, and one of them was that the strongest evidence is that it's written and it is prepared by another party. And all of the evidence that the district has permitted was in writing, and it was prepared by another party. The description of the decline in the construction permits was obtained by the audited financials of the city, and the information regarding the sufficient value of the infrastructure was obtained by engineering reports other than the district's preparation. Also, questions were asked about the value of the assets if they were constructed today. Kelly Hosseini, you heard earlier, indicated that to replace them today would cost about 12 percent more than it originally did. And the question regarding the life of the infrastructure was raised, and again, in the district's, or excuse me, the city's audited financials, the life of the infrastructure ranges between 20 and 100 years. There is still sufficient remaining life in those assets. Lastly, and although it's not, it isn't a criteria, but it's a fair question to ask: how would the district use the money if it did indeed get it? And it would be governed, our use of the money would be governed by the question that we asked the voters when we sought the bond issue. Can we build an elementary and a grade school? And as part of those plans, there was a, it called for a second gym on Edie Ridge's campus, as well as an additional covered play structure, and that's how, that's how we intend to use those monies if they, if we do indeed are able to collect them. And our estimate of the cost of putting those two items is $2 million. Thank you very much.
Steve Emmerich?
I'm Steve Emmerich, and I've had the privilege of being the principal at Laurel Ridge Middle School since we opened in 2009. And I'd like to speak just briefly about, I'd like to speak from a school perspective of our need for that Area 59 money. I want to thank you guys for your years of service. Bill, thank you so much for all that you've done for Sherwood, and Dave and Matt, for all that you guys have done in serving the community of Sherwood. I'd also like to thank the people of Sherwood for providing an amazing educational facility that we have the opportunity to educate kids in every single day. It's a beautiful campus. When Laurel Ridge Middle School was built in 2009, the plan was always to build Phase Two, which included a second gym as soon as the need presented itself due to growth. By our third year, we were already at capacity in that building, but because of the economy, we weren't able to add the additions that we had hoped to add at that time. Edie Ridge was originally built to hold approximately 600 students, and they've been well over that number for the past several years and are out of space. Laurel Ridge was originally built to hold approximately 500 students in Phase One, with the plan of continuing to build Phase Two and the second gym as we continued to grow. Today, we educate over 580 kids in that building every single day, and in spite of the tight space, having one gym, and limited classroom hallway and cafeteria space, we continue to manage to provide, I think, a quality education for kids. The lack of space has, however, presented challenges. Throughout our six years, we have often had three and up to four PE classes, for example, in any one class period, up to 150 students per class period, and as you can imagine, in one gym, that's a challenge. So typically, that means we could have up to 80 students in the gym, another 30 to 40 students outside in the play area, even in the winter, and when need be, another class either in a hallway or in the cafeteria if we're not having lunch at that time. One of our PE teachers will talk just a little more about that. The other challenges that that presents is that during lunch, which is our fourth period, we're using the cafeteria, and if we have three or four PE classes, oftentimes, we're holding a PE class in the hallway. The other week, I was watching a ping-pong unit happening in the hall as ping-pongs were flying onto the cafeteria tables while kids were eating, and those are the kinds of things we deal with on a daily basis. The other challenge is if we have a PE class after lunch, our custodian has approximately seven minutes while kids are dressing down to wash tables, put them up, and machine the floor so that we can use that part of the school for PE. The other challenges we face, and we'll have a student who will share a little bit about that, is just a lack of classroom space, a lack of science labs, crowded hallways, and a crowded cafeteria. We, as I said, have, I believe, managed well, but we have always counted on those Area 59 funds and hopefully some other monies to build Phase Two and to build that second gym, and I too urge you to please vote for the extension of Area 59. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Lucic?
Hi, my name is Frank Lucic, principal at Edie Ridge Elementary and a Sherwood resident. In 2008, 16 months before we opened Edie Ridge and Laurel Ridge, I saw the drawings for the school. Obviously, I was very excited for the innovative layout for instruction, how students would move through our school, and the beautiful design features, as well as the connection to our sister school. So at full extent, a student would be on campus for nine years. I also was pleased for parents and the community, who on the west side of 99 were finally to get their community hub on that side, for sports, for evening activities, for playing, for wellness, both inside and outside the building. I also noticed in the blueprints that the architect designed a park-like setting for our recess playground. That is, the bulk of our play area is grass. Grass sounds great, but we live in Oregon. I expressed my concerns numerous times, and I was told, for a number of reasons, that we were going to stick with grass. My boss, Superintendent Dan Jamison, pulled me aside and asked me to take a positive presumption. I thought, well, maybe the grass might work. Unfortunately, according to spec, the landscape contractor simply hydro-seeded over 25,000 square feet of poorly graded clay with that hydroseed on the soil. In the past six years, we've learned that the back grass at Edie Ridge is the Achilles' heel of our campus. We have 681 students and countless community patrons walking through the muddy grass, which from November to May is really like chocolate frosting with green sprinkles. During the day, our kids are compacted onto the limited hard surfaces. We've increased behavior concerns, injuries, and health room visits because of the congestion outside. Ultimately, we get our back playground for about 50 percent of the school year, and we divide, or we drive our custodians crazy with what our kids track into the building. And this is also true in the evening on Saturdays, when under the IGA, we have cheer, basketball and volleyball families who walk through the grass and track that into our gym. Recession, it sounds odd, but recess is a key component of our instructional program. We have to allow these kids to run around, play, and be loud outside, and it's much, it's a much-needed pressure reliever. Since 2009, we've tried to do what we can to fix these drainage issues. Using building funds, we've tried to amend the soil, aerate the clay, we've even added a surface drain, and then another surface drain, and unfortunately, these solutions haven't improved the situation. Since 2008, I work with Wayne Lowry, and now with Phil Johansson and Rob Foliano, and we all understand that the fix is really wholesale. It's very costly to redo the back playground to effectively serve the students at Edie Ridge, as well as the community who relies on this facility. Our chief financial officers have told me that ultimately, the only way we're going to address this construction issue is to use future reimbursement funds, so I asked the council to support the students at Edie Ridge.
Thank you. Danny Cugaran? Whatever. It's close, right?
Am I on? Okay. Hello, my name is Danielle Cogren, and I have the dual perspective of being both a parent and an educator in the Sherwood School District. I have put one son through Edie Ridge and Laurel Ridge Middle School, and he's currently attending the high school, and I have another son currently attending Laurel Ridge. I also teach physical education and health at Laurel Ridge Middle School. This unique perspective has let me see the growth and the crowding at Laurel Ridge from several sides. I enjoy and absolutely adore going into the beautiful building that I teach students in every day, but having only one gym gives us many challenges. As an educator, we know that learning occurs best in facilities that are appropriate for learning. Having only one gym, and sometimes as many as four classes scheduled in that one space in a given class period, our kids are often forced to do PE in less-than-ideal locations. It is not unusual for us to have to conduct classes in hallways, the cafeteria, or even a classroom, when rain, cold, and windy Oregon weather forces us inside. As these spaces are also being used throughout the day for other students, these places are not conducive for learning and being physically active. With as many as four classes in a period, that can mean as many as 150 students in the gym at one time. Having that many bodies in the gym is a safety issue. Our focus is to get kids moving and keep them physically active and establish healthy habits for the rest of their lives. With that many students in the gym at one time, it severely limits our activity options that we can do safely. There are only a few games and activities that can save- There are only a few games and activities that can safely be done in this space with so many kids. Our PE staff can't do the full curriculum that our kids deserve. Having only one gym is also an issue of equity. Our kids deserve to be able to have the same variety of activities, curriculum, and advantages of gym space that is available to other middle school kids in the Sherwood School District. My two sons and the rest of my wonderful kids at Laurel Ridge have dealt admirably with the crowding and lack of gym space, but they deserve better. My colleagues and the staff at Laurel Ridge have been flexible, giving, and very creative to deal with the crowding and lack of gym space, but they also deserve better. We welcome the ability to provide for the needs of our students. The outcome of extending the reimbursement district will be an improved learning environment where our kids will have more activity options, a full curriculum, as well as safer activity and spaces for our students, and a more equitable school experience. Thank you for your service and your time.
Amy Diaker? Close.
Am I on? Okay. They've said most of everything that I would contribute, so I'm just going to go from a personal perspective as a parent. So I've got two kids in the Sherwood School District. I have a freshman at the high school, and then my son is a fourth grader at Edie. So my daughter went through Laurel Ridge, and we dealt with everything they've talked about. It's growing. It's a huge area. It's very, very inviting for people to move over there. 11 years ago, I moved here because Sherwood's slogan is, "It's a great place for kids." And it, I feel like it's a lot of the reason why people move here. We gravitate, we pull it in. And I feel like by not extending the deadline, it feels like that's a shift in our focus, and that it's going to change the way the community feels. So that's why I'm here, and I support the extension.
Thank you.
Hello? Hi, I'm Emma Keel, and I'm an eighth grader at Laurel Ridge Middle School. Before I start, I'd like to present this check on behalf of Brandy and Darby Budd, who are business owners and parents of an incoming sixth grader. And they are presenting this to the Sherwood School District for this fund because they believe in Laurel Ridge Middle School. So I'm very honored to be here today because I will be speaking on behalf of my fellow students at Laurel Ridge. And we have, we love our school, but we have some concerns. So first off, I'm a teacher's aide for a seventh grade science class. And in the science class, there are around 30-something kids. And it's a very great class, but there are kids in odd corners of the room because there aren't enough space to fit them in. They're behind the board, in my workspace, in the teacher's workspace, and it's not enough room for them to be able to get the learning experiences they need. Also, there aren't enough supplies or space because there's too many kids, so the teacher has to disrupt her class to get me to get more supplies, or papers, or anything they need, because there's not enough. Also, the hallways. The hallways are very nice and spacious, but when you have so many kids crammed into one space trying to get to their class, or to their locker, or to anywhere they need, it's very hard to maneuver. It's like going through a maze. So say, we have four minutes to get to each class. So say you are let out of your class 30 seconds late because you have to clean up your area. So you go out into the hallway, and you maneuver your way to your locker, which could be down the hall, right outside the classroom, or even downstairs. So you go to your locker, and you have to wait in line to get to your locker because there are so many kids trying to get to their lockers, it's like fitting sardines into a can. So you wait another 30 seconds for your locker. You finally get in and do what you need to do. Then you go, say you have to use the restroom. So you go to the bathroom and wait in another line because there are so many kids that need to get their business done. So you go in and do your business, and you leave, and you go to your class. And you make it there barely on time, and then you get in trouble, or if you're late, you get in trouble because you aren't on time, which is hardly fair because it's very hard to get to the class on time. You may even have to go downstairs, or across the hall, or across the school. So I've been at Laurel Ridge now for three years, and I can honestly say that the incline of students has increased a lot. And I know that we've changed boundaries and had kids go to SMS and move and all this, all these things, but it's very, it's very hard. I'm just saying this from the perspective of a student and from my fellow students that I've gathered information, to be able to work with these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Okay. I am Colin Anderson. I'm the vice president of Laurel Ridge Middle School. And having one gym is a problem because, like, for basketball practice, which I play classic basketball, we have to share half a court, which doesn't really get a productive practice done. And it's hard because, like, we have cheer and volleyball and everything else, and it's just really hard for us to get stuff done. Also, space is an issue in the school. Like, we had a new nurse come in, and it took Pax's office away. And also, the lunch staff have to fit in a storage room just so they can have, like, an office. And like, when we go outside for lunch, like, we said, there's a lot of PE classes, and like, we have to fit PE classes everywhere. And like, when they're outside, and it's cold and rainy and wet, everyone that goes outside has to go fit outside on the one little, like, basketball court, and we get soaked in rain. Like, we had one day, it was pouring down rain. Everyone got soaked and tracked a lot of water into the school, and it was just a mess for the janitor to clean up. And it's just really hard for everyone to fit in the school because everyone was just crammed in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Cordy.
I'm Heather Cordy, superintendent of the Sherwood School District. Good evening, Mayor Middleton, city councilors. On behalf of the Sherwood School District, I thank you for the opportunity given to us tonight to share more about our perspective as it relates to the request for an extension to the reimbursement district. In March of this year, we submitted a letter to this city council asking you to consider a municipal code modification allowing for extension of reimbursement districts. After thoughtful consideration, you did modify the code and set two criteria for extensions. They are demonstration of good cause and value of improvements remains sufficient to warrant reimbursements. The Sherwood School District has demonstrated in good faith that we have met the criteria you established. We have submitted evidence to support our position. Your own city staff has come to the conclusion, based on evidence, not emotion, that we met the criteria you set forth. As a reminder, the funds that are in debate through this process are taxpayer funds, approved by taxpayers. As elected officials, the Board of Education for Sherwood School District and you as Sherwood City Council have a fiduciary responsibility to those taxpayers. Most recently, at the November 18 hearing, Marvin Mandl submitted a letter, and Mr. Rankin testified orally to the effect that although the property owners do not want council to grant the extension, they would accept a compromise whereby the district would waive the 4% interest rate from 2008 through the extended period of 2023, and agree to only this one five-year extension. Since that hearing, the district has reached out to the property owners, attempting to reach a settlement largely consistent with that offer. But the property owners more or less rejected the terms that they publicly proposed on November 18, and instead added a number of other conditions that are simply unacceptable to the district. That being said, it's important that you know we agree to the following compromise in exchange for the requested five-year extension. We agree to waive all interest from January 1, 2014, through March of 2023, and to limit extensions of the reimbursement district to this one five-year extension. In effect, the property owners will not have to pay any additional interest on the infrastructure as of the end of last year, and they will continue to get the benefit of 2008 prices for the infrastructure, which we think makes it a pretty good deal for future development. We thank you for your service to our community and for giving so much of your time to consider our request. We are very respectful of the process you have set forth, including the threshold for demonstrating that we have met the criteria which you have established. Accordingly, we ask you to please provide a decision on this topic this evening. It truly is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Richard Brady here? No? Nancy Mendel?
Okay, I'm starting on the other side. Did you get all the?
Yeah, we're just going through all the different.
All right.
People who put in requests to speak.
First, I want to thank the mayor and council members for hearing our concerns. I would also like to inform the council that since the November hearing, my husband and I have become grandparents. Charlotte Rose Mandl was born last Friday, so there is now one member of the next generation of Mandls. In 2008 and 2009, we were told many times by representatives of the city and the school district that the reimbursement district would expire in March 2018. At the March 2008 council meeting, Mayor Mays of Sherwood advised us to wait until 2018 to develop, and Kelly Hosseini testified that some owners would choose to wait the 10 years and that the school district would take that risk. City Attorney Chris Kreen, on his website, says of the Area 59 reimbursement district, quote, "Significantly, the fee becomes due only when the property develops, and only if it develops within 10 years." In a private meeting of the Mandl family, the city, and everybody's lawyers, the Mandl family was told to wait until 2018 if they wished to avoid paying the fee. In court proceedings, representatives of the city and school district testified that the fee expired in 2018. Having city and school district representatives repeat this statement so many times, in my mind constitutes a promise, a promise that the city and school district are considering breaking. It may only be a promise and not a legal guarantee, I don't know, but breaking it certainly seems unethical. The Mandl family's decision to wait until 2018 to develop was based on this promise. Furthermore, it is clear that the city and school district were anticipating our decision from the very beginning before the Great Recession. My husband and I are 65 years old, 10 to 15 years older than the other parties in this case. Our age made the decision to postpone particularly unfortunate, but we didn't feel we had any option. In 2008, the Mandl family was in the position of saving nearly $1 million by waiting 10 years to develop. If the time period is extended to March 2023, we will be in the position of saving well over $1 million by waiting eight more years. If postponement was logical before, I suppose it is again. I feel like we are in the reimbursement district version of the movie Groundhog Day, doomed to repeat a bad day over and over again. We would love to be able to sell the property to a developer in 2015. I think the school district would like that, too. But that would require an amendment to the original reimbursement district resolution that selling the property now would make economic sense. That is, indeed, reduce the amount and the interest fee. Please deny this extension because it's the right thing to do. Instead, encourage the landowners and school district to come to some compromise. Thank you.
Yes. Before I start, I would mention occasionally, the school district gets confused because John Rankin represents Marvin, who is 75% owner. He does not represent me or Randy Keeling. And sometimes, that makes negotiations difficult. I want to thank Mayor Middleton and the city council members for allowing me to speak and for reading our testimony. And I'd like to thank the city staff for being very helpful, even though they may have opinions different than mine. The disagreement with the school district is unfortunate because actually, we're very pro-education. My wife is, spends two days a week volunteering at our local grade school as the smart coordinator. And I've spent about a third, a quarter of my career as a teacher, mostly at college level. I still teach at PCC. I, we were Peace Corps volunteers in the 1970s where we taught at a college in Malaysia. Malaysia was a new, young government, just developing at that time, and they were unproven. And there were, people were always asking us about how American government worked and how things worked in America. So we spent a lot of our time at the USAID library, reading about America, and we learned a lot about America and Americans. One thing about Americans is they do not like ex-fulfacto laws, laws that are applied retroactively. In fact, in our constitution, we have a clause saying that the federal government shall not have no ex-fulfacto laws. Not only that, but we also have a clause saying that states shall have no ex-fulfacto laws. And that's meaningful because the constitution did not say much about states. The constitution was written to limit the federal government, but in this case, it limits state governments. This really is usually applied to criminal law. We can make ex-fulfacto laws at the civil level, and we do all the time, or else we couldn't do zoning. However, Americans feel very strongly about ex-fulfacto laws, and they just don't like them. We accept some of it, but we don't accept a lot of it. And with, with that in mind, changing the rules of the game is really an unfair thing, and it's not something Americans accept. If you look at Measure 37, the reason it passed was because it limits people's rights after they thought they had those rights. And then Measure 49 passed for much the same reason, and I'm afraid I can't remember the original measure. That was Measure 7 or Measure 2, something like that. And it was thrown out by the Supreme Court because it dealt with too many items to put into the Oregon constitution at one time. Another thing Americans feel strong about is contracts and promises. And we feel a promise was made to us. The reason the school district used a reimbursement district is, as opposed to an LID, is because we do not have as many rights to protest or to remonstrate a reimbursement district. As a result of not having so many rights, the school district accepts a lot more risk. Unfortunately, they did lose on this. And we'd like, we'd appreciate you supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this thing on? Okay. Yeah, thank you for hearing me. I offer a pretty unique perspective because I was actually an employee of the district as a lunch substitute at Laurel Ridge.
Pull the microphone closer to your.
Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was actually a lunchtime substitute, helped supervise lunch, as well as a volunteer at Laurel Ridge for a little over a year, and I volunteered there from 2009 to about 2012. I met and hung out with kids like Colin Anderson and Mitchell Mandl over here. He was in seventh grade when I met him. And I also met my wife through meeting Mitchell, who happens to be Mariana Morrison now, who used to be Mandl. So I've got this unique blend of, man, I love Laurel Ridge, and I really do. I see the things that the school district is bringing up, and I'm like, on one hand, I'm like, yeah, that's really difficult. There was, it was crowded from the get-go, almost, though. Like, I remember just lunches were crazy, and they've been crazy, and I'm sure they've gotten crazier with more and more kids. But part of me wonders, it's like, did they build the school too small in the first place? On the other hand, I see the Mandls, and like, there's nothing in me that thinks that they invited the school district to come and buy their property. I mean, it's been in the Mandl family for 100-plus years. The house that's there, on the farm in the corner, have Edie and Elward. Marvin's, Marvin's family's been there for a while. Mari and I even thought about moving. Mari and I even thought about moving in there, but we can't because of the new improvements that have been made on the property, and there's a few things that we had to fix, so we're scared even to touch the property. All that being said, it does seem a little bit of a... It's just a conundrum because I know that the Mandel family, like, man, they put their kids through the Sherwood School District. Marvin was here. He went to school here, and he knows the whole community. It's funny, he can tell me just everything that's ever gone on in this city. I've only been here since 2009, but he tells me that the Robin Hood Theater was not always just a parking lot. And he tells me about everybody who used to live here, there, how long this guy's been there, and the farms that have since kind of like scattered out. He loves this city, and I know that he's invested a lot. He's definitely way into it, and the whole family loves this city. I mean, obviously, there's frustrations. I think we all have frustrations with the cities that we live in. But I just want to kind of take that into effect, is that, you know, the Mandels have given a lot to our community, too, and I know that the school districts need this money. But I just don't know that it's fair to ask for a family that's waited for so long to kind of go into it and ask all this from one family. I'm definitely open to strategic thinking on how to raise money for the school district, and I would be a part of that team in a heartbeat, and I'm sure the rest of the Mandel family would, too. But that's just for your consideration.
Thank you. Our clause?
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. Well, the dog's finally coming around to bite you, hasn't it? Now, look, you had urban renewal money, and I heard some statements here that are amazing. Those subdivisions over there are still paying your fees, Bill. This brilliant observation, the $40,000 or $200,000 an acre to $250,000 that D.R. Horton just paid, aren't suppressing those properties because they paid for the roads. Please. That's almost as big a fiction as if Abraham Lincoln had gone to Harvard, he'd been a great lawyer. I mean, this is a simple question of people looking for money, and you have a problem. The school district's not the same thing this city is. It has a different municipal boundary line. They picked where they wanted to go. They picked the way they wanted to do it. Then we turned around and plucked out of the state treasury with this urban renewal district 35 million they're never going to see in net present worth. How can you sit here and analyze this when you don't go back and order a full rebate to everyone close to that school that is trying to contribute to these people getting a full rebate on their houses? Drop your SDCs. You're double billing them. If... Now, we can't use Walmart because, of course, we funded Walmart, and we're going to try, I think, to give them another million tonight after 2 million or 3 million or 7 million. Everybody's forgotten count because they're politically active and do the right thing, put something in that the staff benefits from. But this is why I keep telling you better check yourself before you wreck yourself because you're listening to the staff on all of this. Go get the money back from D.R. Horton and give it to the person you bankrupt. You might know him, Mr. Butterfield. I think you do know him pretty well, and you bankrupted him. They couldn't build it. You build it with fee on fee on fee, and that's the way you finance this town, and that's what's coming back to bite you. You've got somebody asking for another million tonight out of funds other people have paid. And Bill, I don't know why you just don't sit down and say they paid for their infrastructure. Now give them a free zone where we collect no SDCs and no TIPS. The moment you do that, you'll see this staff come up, and let's stop the hero language of our language. I've had three boys go to that school, and the two that I left in there did as well as any students in that school. I don't care how you want to measure it athletically or any other way. I've got nothing I'm saying about the school, but I am saying there are other school systems. That's the beauty to America. You're not dependent on one viewpoint, thank God. But I don't know why you just don't give them back the development fees. Why is the city sitting here and saying, oh, we're such good guys, when you're double dipping? I don't understand it. It's unfair, and it's unreasonable, and it's what's causing the community conflict. Why are you not engineering the new traffic roundabout on Sunset? Why are we, the city, not out there? Because the county doesn't trust you. After the stuff you pulled over here in this Langer subdivision, they're not going to give you another crack to take another $2 million of the public's money. You're an advisory role. You're making the city so hard for a good city manage to run it. It's not even funny because you first generate artificial conflict, then you have the cognitive dissonance of giving money to the politically active and screwing the people who are just good citizens. Stop. Go back, reconfigure it, and say, here's your $40,000 a house. It's the $200,000 they're looking for. Then your staff is no longer a stakeholder in the process, a public servant. No reason for all of this, none at all, but you go full circle.
Thank you. Mr. Rankin? Is Mr. Rankin here?
Yeah, he's coming.
Okay.
I'm 66 years old, and it takes me a minute to get up. I'd like to be able to pass out some information.
You can go through our city recorder?
Can I not take my four minutes? Please. We've got my letter into the record, and then I've got some ORSs into the record, and then I've got a study that was done by the city here.
Now, are all these other people going to speak to?
Yes, please. Pardon me?
Are all these other people going to speak to?
Well, you know, you heard a lot of testimony from a lot of folks who were supportive of...
We heard a lot last time from both... Yeah, we've heard a lot from both sides, too.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate it if you'd give me a little more time than four minutes. I mean, there was a lot of testimony...
Just start going, and we'll see where we end up.
Okay. Let me do that for you. Let me start by saying my name. Clear my throat here. John Rankin, 26715 Southwest Baker Road, Sherwood, Oregon. I, too, have been a teacher. I, too, have been involved in the area. I also am a city attorney for three cities currently. I've worked for seven cities in my lifetime in various capacities, seven or eight cities. So I understand the difficult decision that you have before you. And my clients respectfully appreciate everything that the school district has done. I represented Loretta Lebon until her death and in this whole process. And please, understand that some of the testimony you heard tonight was not quite complete from the school district and school district supporters. The 90 acres that came in as part of the concept planning process, the Mandel family, the Lebon family, and the rest of the neighbors out there worked very hard to try to coordinate with the school district. The school district did do a lot of things that were very nice for them to do and cooperating with us and all of that, but we had to always push the envelope. For instance, we had to push the envelope when the annexation came along. Here, we were put into the urban growth boundary, and then the annexation application comes along, and we were, looked like we were going to be left out. Well, if you have a school coming in next door to you, and you work hard to put it in a place where it won't adversely impact your client's property or your property, and you try hard to work with the district, and then they look like they're going to take... And you know how difficult annexations are in this city. They're going to take a stance where they're just going to annex the school district property, not the rest of it. We had to work very hard all the way along the line to make sure that our understanding of what should happen was actually going to become a reality. I passed out, and I hope you've got it by now. There's a copy of my letter there. There's also a copy of a statute. It's ORS 223304, and it's the basis for reimbursement districts. And it, the only place that you'll see 10 years in it is in a credit, okay? It's on page two of that handout, and it says credits. Now, this is SDC, Systems Development Charge Credits. Credits must be used in the time specified in the ordinance, but no later than 10 years from the date the credit is given. What normally happens here is you see from, you've seen from David Mandel's testimony. He did a significant amount of deep research into reimbursement districts around the state. 10 years is pretty much the typical limit that people put on these. The longer you go, the more likely you get into a realm of lien, encumbrance, assessment, and tax. In fact, the... I'll have a copy for Mr. Kreen here, too, but I'm sure he can find it. I've got a copy of the case that is Keely versus the city council of the city of Sherwood. You remember from last testimony that the court of appeals case that the Mandel family and Lebon family worked up to the Court of Appeals was only limited to the street assessment. We had a street assessment of, on this reimbursement district, of $440,000. We had a street length of 439 feet. It was $1,000 a foot. We felt like that was unfair. We had our day in court, and we went all the way up and came back down, and, of course, the Court of Appeals said, no, it looks like it's just and reasonable. And they also said this, and I'm quoting from this case. "The city passed a resolution doing so in leveling a conditional..." This is what they put. This is the terms they called it. "A conditional reimbursement fee of $44,268 on plaintiffs, conditional because the fees become due only in the event that the plaintiff's properties are developed before 2018." So it's conditional. So I argue that... We've said this to you before, but I want to kind of restate it a little differently. A reimbursement district fee is not an assessment, not a tax, and not a lien against the property as a local improvement district would be. Local improvement districts, as you've heard, you've got remonstrance abilities and all those other things that complicate the issue for the person seeking the reimbursement or the developer seeking the reimbursement. So you've got a situation where the fee is assessed for a 10-year period of time. If it's assessed for longer than a 10-year period of time, or the fee is due on a piece of property when development occurs for a longer period of time than that, it becomes less conditional, more unconditional. It becomes more of a burden rather than less of a burden. And what happens on the school district side in an extension situation is that the extension actually gives them a benefit. It takes away some of their risk. So you have this risk-benefit analysis that goes on in any reimbursement setting, and it's held at 10 years usually because that's the reasonable period of time. The court has spoken. It's a reasonable period of time. And so I would urge you to deny the application, and if you decide that you want to approve the application, I had on the table at our last meeting in my letter, my last letter on November 18th, a suggestion that we waive, that you waive. In other words, confer a benefit. If you're going to give the school district a benefit and remove some risk, they knew what they were getting into. They knew the reimbursement district was for 10 years. They came to you purposefully to see if they couldn't get an extension. And so if you're going to extend a benefit to them, you, in my opinion, must extend a benefit to the Mandel family as well. I want to also make sure this gets into the record, too. I want to hand this to the clerk here, city recorder, but you saw in the materials that the school district submitted, a bar graph showing what appears to be a significant decrease in residential building permits after 2005. You can see it right here. As part of our public records requests of the city, we got a copy of the last 10 years of building permits. Now, these are single-family, these are residential, excuse me, residential building permits is the label I saw on the title of the file, and I've got a copy of the file. I want to put it into the record to preserve any further action that we might need to take. And that is, the building permits that are here, they say, "Single Family Development", SFD. But if you look at them and you look at them carefully, you see there are a lot of additions, decks, windows, et cetera. And I did a quick calculation while I was sitting down over there. In 2006, the bar graph shows 221 building permits, okay? That's not single-family dwellings. I did the calculation based on the city's own records, and I see 114 actual permits. So that's all of them. In 2006, 114 permits, 32 of them are not single-family dwellings. There are additions, additions to the rooms, whatever, windows, et cetera. And I can read a series of them to you if you like. That means there's 82 single-family dwellings that were built in 2006 in the city, based on the city's own records, not 221. I took 2007, I did the same analysis. I came up with 83 total permits. 36 of them were non-single-family dwelling permits. That means 47 remaining, and the city records created by the school district show 117 permits. So 117 versus 47 permits. My argument is that this, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. You are required by law to look at the criteria that you have laid out yourself and to address the facts and evidence that you have, that have been submitted to you. Address that criteria to those facts and evidence. So when you look at the issue of, is there a good reason, and the Great Recession is being pushed as the great reason, that great reason is flawed based on the school district's Remember that there's been a lot of testimony tonight, and heartfelt testimony, and I appreciate that heartfelt testimony. If I were you in your position, it would be a tough decision to make, but I want to focus you on what your decision should be in a quasi-judicial setting. It should be based on the evidence that's been submitted that addresses the criteria that are before you. You have an obligation to base your decision on substantial evidence in the record, and I apologize to Phil Johansson. I didn't mean, I meant substantial evidence in the record, not just evidence. Evidence is written, yes, there's evidence, but it's got to be substantial evidence in the record. That's what the law requires.
Okay, we let you go over quite a bit. Do you want to wrap it up, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you. There were statements made by the superintendent, I believe, former superintendent, about the money that was paid to the Mandel family and the Lebon family and all the efforts that were made by the school district. Please understand that that's just fair market value. The school district is required to pay fair market value to somebody's property, just as the city is, to somebody's property when they need it for some public purpose. So it was stated as though it was something the Mandels were demanding. No, it was, it's fair market value. We can't demand any more or request any more compensation than what is fair market value. than what is fair market value. And I know Ms. Hosany has stated in her letter this idea that the school district is not unique, that they're a developer, and you heard a lot of statements tonight from the school district arguing for the taxpayer money and all that sort of thing. Last time, I stated that the taxpayer money, the special assessment that's been used to pay back the bonds, should be used to pay back those bonds, not used to pay for a gymnasium or anything else that's needed for the community. That's the commitment they made to the, to the citizens of this district and the taxpayers, myself included, when they originally got the bond. Let's see, I had, okay. You've also been handed a copy of the PowerPoint, PowerPoint program that Julia Haichuk presented to the school district on January fourteen, or fifteenth, 2014. I'd like, again, now, what I'm doing here is I'm putting evidence into the record that refutes the evidence that the school districts have put in the record, just, okay? If you look at page three on that document, it says, "One-Year Look." This is from the city. "In 2013, the Building Department processed 39 residential building permits," and it said, "which are expected to be completed prior to September 2014." The city, it says, expects another sixty additional--
Benefit of others, I think that's labeled seven at the bottom.
Seven, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's all right.
Commissioner Grant, Councilor Grant. And then after that, so there are 60 additional units of approved subdivisions to build out, and you can see a map right after that. Then you've got the two-to-five-year look, and that's the five years that's being requested. Here's the substantiation of the documentation I gave you last time, and that is, "No formal application," this is page nine, "no formal application has been submitted for land development, however," so there's no applications right now for a significant residential land development, I guess, at least in January. However, it is anticipated 180 units will be approved and developed for the next two to five years. And I think the point I'm trying to make, obviously, and I made it before, but I want to reiterate it, is that the, the Great Recession appears to not be over, and it appears to be ongoing because the building permit levels are continuing to maintain the level that they have been prior to 2006, the ramp-up in 2006. Okay. Finally, the current superintendent was, was kind enough to offer a, an additional compromise. The compromise they submitted was to me, and remember, I have 75% landowners of the Mandel family and then Lowell Lebon and his family I represent, but with, with the Mandels, I don't represent the 25% landowners. So when I received that, their, their first offer and compromise, it was 1% for the duration. And what I did then was push it to the Mandel family, make sure they got it, and they came back with something more than that because the way we look at it is this. We came back with a $500,000, essentially a reduction to $500,000. And the reason for that is this, because you're going to hear it on the street, the reason for it is this, the, the, the school district knew the risk going into the deal. Ten years is what any developer gets. I doubt if Walmart was requesting a five-year extension that we'd even be here because you probably wouldn't even have changed the ordinance for Walmart as you did for the school district. But here's what happened, what happens. We've got a, a benefit you're giving to the school district. They've had their ten-year run, or they will have had their ten-year run by 2018, and, and they, if they want more, they should be able to give something for it, either give it from the school, from the school district itself or from the city.
Okay, we're going to have to cut it off there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like you to please to look carefully at what's going on here, and we'd like you to deny the application for the extension, and the Mandel family will continue to wait out the 2000 to 2018, and maybe longer than that. But if you do approve it, then I request that you give some benefit, some meaningful benefit to the Mandel family and to the others that are out there as well.
Okay, since, would the, would the school district attorney like to come back up and talk to? I mean, we gave their attorney quite a bit of time, so you're, you're welcome to come back on up.
[inaudible] I don't think we picked that up. There we go. Oh, boy. That's the big one. That's the building permit.
Okay. Please, go ahead again.
Kelly Hosany, representing Sherwood School District. I, I'm not going to really take any time. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. I will just reiterate that we did try to reach some sort of a meaningful settlement over the, the last month, pretty much got nowhere. We think it's, what we put on the table for your consideration is quite meaningful, and that is that the interest ended as of December 31st of 2014, so it would be 2013. And, and one of the reasons for choosing that date is because we did have two properties that did pay without any issues or quarrel or whatever. They, they paid their reimbursement district fee, and they paid the interest that was due on that. And speaking with staff and your, your city attorney, it just makes it cleaner if we don't mess with that. And we just, from, you know, January 1st of 2015, 14, see, I can't, can't remember what year it is, January 1st, 2014, through March 8, 2023, we will forego that interest. And, and that's, that's a big hit, but, but we're willing to do that to, you know, hopefully make you all feel better about your decision and, and feel like that, that the process has been fair, and we wouldn't come back for any additional extensions. But throughout, I'm happy to answer any questions or if you all wonder if maybe X or Y would be acceptable, feel free to ask me. I'm sure Mr. Rankin would also be happy to offer his opinion as well.
Thank you. I have one more. Came in late, Pat Allen.
Thanks, Mayor Middleton, council members. My name is Patrick Allen. I live at 23769 Southwest Pine County Avenue in Sherwood. I'm a current member of the Sherwood School Board, but today I just wanted to give you a little bit of historical perspective in my previous role as a member of the Planning Commission during the time that we, that we did this work. And you heard particularly some testimony about what the district should or shouldn't have known at the time that this reimbursement district was created, and particularly, you know, some talk about what was happening to building permits in 2007. Downturns in housing construction come and go, and the difference between this as a downturn and, and what became the Great Recession was not just the downturn in the residential construction industry, but as you know and has been well documented, the ripple effect because of pooled risks and complex financial, financial investments that, that locked up the entire credit market. There are two different things to think about in terms of evidence of what the district should have known. Building permits is certainly one, but the other is subdivisions. And there were open subdivisions in that area in the pipeline at the time that the district moved forward with, with the reimbursement district, and I think had reason to believe at the early stages of the recession that we were looking at a, at a housing downturn, not the cataclysm that we faced. And in fact, this body, at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, enacted one or more extensions of the amount of time for every single approved subdivision and development plan in the city in reflection of that market circumstance. And that was not something that was contemplated at the time the, the district pursued a reimbursement, this reimbursement district. So if you're trying to think of what should the district have known and what, what risks should it have assumed, I think you need to consider that notion that, that you yourselves reflected that things had changed and that the length of time of development was going to be longer as a result. And even, even those extensions weren't enough to save a number of, of developments, and again, is well documented in terms of bankruptcies and those kinds of things on those, on those very plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to take a, a break till 9:15. Okay, we're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting again. One thing I have to bring up is, I'm going to notify council, this will go past 9:30, so they, is anybody, I mean, we got to get the last meeting done, so we've got a lot of stuff left on there, so it will go past 9:30. So if anybody has objections, I guess they can just go home. Do we have a, did staff want to bring anything up now?
We certainly can answer questions if you have them. I didn't have anything specifically to respond to. This is really a council policy decision. We, we've done a technical review. We agree that there is demonstration of good cause and that the, the value continues to be there, but ultimately, it's council's decision. You can disagree, you can agree. And we do, we did get a heads up from the school district that they might be proposing the, the interest limitation, and so we do have some language if council is interested in that, if, as you discussed that, we do have some, some potential language if you wanted to insert that or modify the, the resolution that's in front of you.
Go ahead and down, Bill.
Well, for one, I would certainly like to see that language modified, and, you know, I want to, this is a tough decision. I mean, I can see both sides, and I like the fact that, right there at the last end, end of the day, they tried to fix it, but I, I think they should have come in here with a resolution already, you know, good on both sides. Would have been easier on all of us. To put us, you know, to make this decision, it's a tough one.
I had several questions and comments myself, so bear with me. Who was the person, who was the entity that decided what the criteria was? And where did that come from?
The criteria for the extension?
Yes.
That was based on, actually, consultation with, with legal staff, looking at the Oregon laws and what needed to be demonstrated, and, and the request from the school district is just for the city to consider that, and so we identified what those, what the criteria should be, and ultimately, it was adopted by council.
And that was adopted this year on the code?
Yes.
In June?
I don't have that date right in front of me.
I guess my other question, too, is why was that criteria used?
Why was which criteria?
The criteria that you ended up deciding to use. Why, why was that? Who's this? What's that?
Yeah, if, if Chris, I mean, it, we need to have some criteria. We want to establish a process and criteria, have an opportunity for public hearing.
Was that, my question, I guess, is, was that a discussion among you, or was it a discussion among the different parties?
It was not a discussion among the different parties. It was, it was a legal discussion, and Chris, maybe you can chime in on that.
So I, I don't really know the backstory about how the request to amend the code came to the city. Presumably, it came from the, the school district, but I, working with staff, developed, proposed language to incorporate into the city code that would allow the city, if it, in its discretion, determined it wanted to do so, to allow an extension. I wanted, my goal with the criteria was to accomplish two things. One, to retain maximum discretion on this city council so that the decision is yours and yours alone, but then, secondly, to remain true to the purpose of a reimbursement district. Recall that the improvements and the amount of the fee imposed on an individual property is intended to reflect the benefit those improvements confer on that property. So in order to remain true to that, we developed the criteria that the assets must still have a useful life, a remaining useful life adequate to support the amount of the fee that's imposed on the property, because if the road is degraded and the developer has to go in and rebuild it anyway, then it would, they'd be paying twice for the same thing. So I wanted to make sure that the, we made it a qualitative and objective determination about the, the remaining useful life of the asset, that it was sufficient to support the amount of the fee imposed on a property. That's the one criteria. And the other good faith criteria was intended to allow other, the council to consider other factors and determine in its discretion whether or not to approve the request. So that's why those criteria were, were selected.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I'm just going to talk out loud for a minute. It's my observation that when this all started, and I was on the council back when this reimbursement district started, between 2004 and 2000, or 2005 and 2009, there was a certain number of property owners, and of course, there were people who wanted to be a part of it, and there were people who didn't want to be a part of it. And so, you know, taking everything into account, I think it's the Mandels and maybe some of the other property owners' intention that they would never develop the property. I, I think that's been their intention all along. And so when they have their attorney up here discussing the fact that that was what was promised to them, obviously, their intention was not to develop the property. They were going to wait it out. And it sounds like to me tonight that regardless of what, if we vote on it tonight and what the vote outcome is, they're going to, you know, if they have to wait another five years, they will. And certainly, on the other side of that coin, the district took a risk and took a And here we are today, having to deal with a very tough issue. I think contract law, as Mr. Mandel stated, is a very substantial thing in our society about promises that are given and promises that are, you know, kept or unkept. And so I'm looking at this thing from many different angles. I don't want anybody to infer that I'm going to vote one way or the other, but I just kind of want everybody to understand where I'm coming from on this decision. Because contract goes to the very basic of our society and in how we function, and whether we keep our promises or we don't. You know, the school district took a risk, and unfortunately, if the Mandels and the other property owners don't develop, then they don't get any of that money reimbursed. And, you know, that's unfortunate. Obviously, there is a benefit that the Mandels and the other property owners have received. I'm not denying that. But the thing is, is under, when we discuss contracts, the reason why we have contracts in society is because it benefits both parties. And what this comes down to is if we approve the extension, then not only are we modifying a contract, which is pretty much unheard of, unless it's agreed to by both sides, but if we're going to modify, there has to be a benefit to both sides. That's how I, that's how I look at it. And if I vote yes to extend it, it's because I see a benefit to both sides. Now, I personally feel that there is an agreement to be made. They obviously haven't come to that agreement yet. I wish that they could so that I wouldn't be sitting here having to make or think about so hard about this kind of a decision. or think about so hard about this kind of a decision. But I want all of you to understand that's where I'm coming from and trying to make a decision. And as much as I would like to vote one way or the other way, there's conflicts on both sides of the fence. I think, you know, I think it's reasonable that people pay for things that they receive. But, you know, I can't sit here and say that this was a great contract personally. Everybody took risks, including the Mandels. And I don't personally feel that the Mandels in the beginning wanted to be in the contract. But because of the number of people who voted to do the district, they were forced into that. And so it gives me reservation to pause and think about, you know, what am I really doing here? And so I go back to the point that I think that there is a deal to be made between the two of them. The question is, based on what we're looking at today, are we going to give the district more leverage in being able to negotiate a deal with the Mandels? I don't know, because theoretically, or I think the Mandels will just not develop the property. That's my feeling. I could be wrong. But I just want to let the public know that that's what I'm thinking about and how I'm going to reach my decision. Thank you.
Counselor Grant?
I'm going to hang on for it.
Counselor Lamb?
I'll just say in four years, this is the most difficult situation we've had to be in. So I really wish the two parties could have taken the time to figure out terms like Counselor King is discussing that were agreeable to both sides. It's unfortunate, after all this time, that the interest offer and any other offers that might have been on the table or could have been on the table hadn't been worked out. Now it's sitting here in our lap to figure it all out. So that's all I've got.
I actually have a question for the school district. So the Mandel said, the attorney said, that the school district offered to reduce fees to 1% over life. Is that the case?
Yes, please.
Okay. But then you said that you were agreeable to, have you not offered and you're offering now to be agreeable to stopping the interest from January 2014? If we extend it to March 2023, is that correct?
Yes. And in discussions with staff about what to do with interest, staff felt like it was somewhat problematic to go back and waive the interest all the way from the beginning, since we already had folks who had paid the reimbursement district fee and the interest that that included. And I think that I, you know, I see that you guys are really struggling. And I wish that we could have made, you know, this grand bargain before we got here. I think when the district went back to John Rankin with the offer of 1% interest from the beginning to the end, we thought, well, I mean, that's pretty close to what they said they would take. We should be able, I mean, that should be able to work. And I think, as I said, what we got back was, as Mr. Rankin said, no interest, no extension. Reduce the amount to $500,000 total. And you can't come in for, well, we wouldn't even get this extension. And there was something else in there, too, but, you know, zero interest. I think that's what it was. And one of the problems that we have is that there are multiple property owner interests here. I think that the Mandels are the most active in opposing this reimbursement district. And if council feels like what the district has offered already, which is the, you know, interest rate waiver from the end of last year forward, isn't good enough and feels like, well, what John Rankin offered, which was 0% from 2008 to 2023, that that would make you feel better and get you over the hump, then I would imagine that the school district could agree to that. And frankly, that's probably the closest thing that you're going to get to some grand compromise from all the parties, because all the parties aren't even here. And, you know, so it's, in a perfect world, there would be something in writing to give you, but there does not. But I think that what I just said kind of comes closest to what it sounds like everybody could agree to, which is the 0% and no further extensions beyond this five-year extension. So there's that quid pro quo that people are looking for, including the Mandels.
Okay, so I just want to clarify.
Sure.
Because I heard two things.
Right.
Did you just change that you would agree to 0% from January 2014 to 0% from the beginning?
We came here tonight offering, because it was the cleanest way to do it, the 0% from January 1st of this year all the way through 2023. So foregoing all of that interest. And what I'm telling you is if that, if you can't get to a yes based on that and you think that's still not enough, then what we heard, at least some of the Mandels say this evening, is that they would accept that if we took the interest away all the way back from the beginning. And if that's where you guys, if that's what gets you guys to an extension, then that's what the district could agree to.
So additionally, I just had a question. This doesn't expire until 2018.
Right.
What brought it to us today?
I would have to ask the school district that question. Probably just trying to make sure that they were on top of things and that this didn't fall through the cracks. And, you know, there really doesn't seem to be much of a difference. I mean, whether we bring it to you this year, or we wait two years and bring it, I mean, the effect is the same. The yes gets us to the same date.
If you could stay there, I have questions for you. I appreciate Counselor Clark's questions, because those are some of mine also. So first of all, I'd like to clarify at least what I heard in our last meeting. Because I think that Mr. Rankin possibly be being paraphrased unfairly. And so, or maybe I heard it wrong. What I heard him say was, if you have to do this, could you please waive the interest? I didn't hear him make an offer of doing it or something. I think there's a difference between what he said and what I'm kind of hearing here. And I want to be fair to him here.
Well, he actually, when he said that, he looked directly at me and said, well, I haven't cleared this with the school district council yet. But if you have to, you know, then he went into it. It was definitely, I read it as, okay, here's a signal to you, school district, as to what we, where we would go with this.
All right. Okay, fair enough on that. I don't want to pursue it any further. But I certainly, up until this time tonight, didn't have any, in my mind, that there was an offer out on the table that had been extended at that time. So, and when you said that the property owners who had developed, at least some of whom developed around 2008 or something like that, no, excuse me.
No.
There were property owners that developed and paid the whole amount with the interest. When was that again?
November of 2013.
13, okay, okay.
Yeah.
November, and that's why the end of 2013, or the end of 2014 seems like a natural time to have a breakpoint. How many property, how many, yeah, how many property owners was that?
I think it was two properties. It was the Rasmussen property and the Nelson property. And I think it was about $200,000.
Okay.
That they paid.
So I'm going to say a few things that are compelling me. You know, this is an awfully hard one. Because every time I pick something up here and read it, I am very highly compelled by whatever I'm reading. And it's from both sides. There are two very compelling arguments here. And there's no doubt about it. Everything I hear from any side, I just agree with. I agree with it. You're all right. And so that makes it tough. And it also makes it tough when we've got children involved effectively. However, that type of thing kind of annoys me because I don't think this is about crowded classrooms. I really don't. Because I've been explained for all the time I've lived in Sherwood, crowded classrooms are about the school funding equation, which is broken. And I think it's broken. And I don't think this is about a gymnasium either. So I wish we could just kind of just cut through the fog and talk about this for what it's really about. The two, we've got two sides that are far apart here. And not only far apart on what they would agree to, but far apart on what the facts even are. We're still, we're here arguing, or not arguing, but hearing arguments about how many houses were built in a given year. Come on. That's not the position I'd like to be in when we make a decision. Going back to what sounds like an offer, if it is, and I think Counselor Clark clarified a lot of it, but because, I'll say, the interest is what, the interest really nags at me. Because in my world, you pay interest because you want something sooner than you're otherwise going to get it. And the burden of interest falls on the people who want it sooner, not the people who want it later. And so it always annoyed me. Now, I knew the interest equation was in there, but none of us knew it was going to grow to this type of thing because of the waiting time and all that stuff. But wow, you know, the interest has grown into something. And, but it seems like that's the burden of the people who wanted the infrastructure sooner. It just seems to me. Is the offer I'm hearing, and I know it's not an offer. You came here tonight for what you presented. And I clearly hear you saying that. But is what you're suggesting might be agreeable? That the interest continue to the end of 2018, or whenever this was supposed to originally end, and then turn into what the interest would be? Or are you saying, if we make the extension tonight, what has been floated is interest stops at 201? You're all nodding your head.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. Even if somebody develops next year or tomorrow, or not tomorrow, or whenever this goes into effect? Okay. So I understand at least what's being floated. I tend to agree that if we extend this, it needs to be something that where both parties come to the table. And I feel pretty good about that, kind of where it's headed. I hate to be the arbiters here or the people creating the negotiation, asking both parties what we agree to. I really hate being in that position tonight. But it seems like we're getting someplace. And with that, I'd like to hear from the other counselors. I guess that's just two.
So one thing that was mentioned is that really only one party is represented here. So the Mr. Johansson, who's the CEO of the school district, passed out something that was written yesterday. And when we talk about how difficult this is, we've had eight documents handed to us tonight, all multiple pages long. Some of them were emailed yesterday, and we got our packet over the weekend. But most of these documents were not in our packet. So they were handed out to us or emailed yesterday. But in this chart is all the other represented parties, of which, oh, I've only heard from one party tonight. So if the school district and the Mandels and the other parties can come to an agreement, obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, correct?
Well, what I would tell you is if the other parties aren't here, they all got notice. It means that they're not bothered by this. I mean, they've had multiple opportunities to show up to hearings, to present written testimony. There doesn't, this reimbursement district does not, with all due respect, it's not a contract. It doesn't need all of the parties to come and sign documents. I think what you have in the room are the most vocal parties, the ones who actually do care about this. And at least 75% of the property owners are represented by John Rankin. And what I'm proposing to you is we don't need to make this more complicated by saying, well, where are the Fillmores? Well, the Fillmores obviously aren't worried about this. You know, where are the Alexanders not worried about this? It's your decision to make. You've got the school district that says, you know, we need the money and we'd like to build a gym with it or, you know, help to improve the schools with it. You've got the Mandels that say, you know, this is really onerous on us as far as developing our property. You've got the most vocal parties in the room. And it does sound like we have an agreement, frankly. Or we at least have something that you all can feel good about as a quid pro quo with saying, okay, let's go ahead and give the district something. We'll grant the extension request. And we're going to give the Mandels and all the other property owners that apparently are not bothered by this or don't care and are not here and haven't bothered to have their voices heard, we're going to give them something, too. And that's no interest. And frankly, that's a pretty dang good deal. And they're locking in the price of that, that they're paying for that infrastructure back to 2008. So I think there is an agreement. I think, and now this time, I'm going to look over at John Rankin. And, you know, and you can, and so. Sure. Yeah, no, absolutely. And so if that is something that's acceptable, we can pretty much cut this off right here. Except that there would have to be a resolution drafted that has that new language in it. And you could cut off, no more testimony, no more submittals, no more this. You just come back, sign the resolution that everybody who cared came to an agreement on, and you're done.
Right. But can you actually craft a deal tonight in this room without convening a board of the school?
Yes. I am.
Because you're empowered to represent them?
I am empowered to represent the board.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comments about the vocal majority. This is a list that your, that the school district CFO provided to us. And so when I think about who I represent, I just don't represent just one vocal group. So that's why I mentioned it.
Right, right.
Because we hadn't said
Right.
that any agreement would apply to all property owners, which is why I asked the question. And you mentioned the word bothered many times. But I just want to make sure that what we do is fair and equitable. If an agreement can be reached, even though those parties aren't here.
Right.
We don't know the circumstances of why they're not here tonight. And if I told you every person who said I couldn't make that meeting in 10 years, it'd be a large group of people. So I just wanted to make sure that if we make a decision tonight, which I'm inclined not to do. So I just wanted to make sure that, that if we make a decision tonight, which I'm inclined not to do, mostly because there, there's no urgency for us to have to decide tonight. The district goes until March of 2018. That's three and a, three years and three months from now. And I'm pretty sure that all the parties, you know, whatever documentation they would need, whatever resolution we could draft, we could certainly take care of next month or in February. I mean, there's no, unless I'm missing something, council or staff. There's no pending emergency or land use issue or development issue that makes us have to say yes to the school district tonight. Other than everybody would see it as an early Christmas present, obviously who represents the school district? The 18 people that were here tonight. But when I'm handed, you know, eight documents and I'm supposed to make a decision, um, and as Counsel Grant said, there seems to be a, a disagreement between what's actually on the table and who it applies to and when it begins. It, it just seems like we're sort of, you know, throwing it together at the last minute because there's some perceived urgency that either I'm not aware of. And, um, I think that, I don't know what happened between the last time we, we discussed this issue between the two parties, which was a month ago, and today, but we were flooded with information then, yesterday and today. So obviously the, the date of this meeting gave people some urgency. Go ahead, Julianne, you clearly wanna say something.
Well, yeah, sorry. There is no urgency. The only complication with delaying it is that we will have a majority of new council members that will need to review all the material that's been entered into the record, probably review the minutes, maybe the tapes, so that they're up to speed, so that when they're making a decision, they're making a decision on everything in the record. And that just is, is an added burden for our wonderful new, um, council members.
Welcome to city council. Part of the job.
So, I mean, certainly, um, you do not have to make a decision this evening. There isn't a land use clock or anything like that, but there is that, um, complication. Just to clarify, this would apply, you know, if there's an agreement that's embedded within the resolution, it would apply to all properties, which is why my initial, you know, concern with any idea of going retroactive.
Right.
Is that we would need to think through what that means for those that have already paid the interest. Because I'm sure that they'll be knocking on the door and someone, you know, wants, wants someone...
That was my next question, is this, we had somebody pay in November of 2013.
Right.
Which was a year ago.
That was one of my questions, too. Is there a requirement to reimburse?
Um, I, I don't know, but I'm sure that they will ask. You know, I mean, one...
I mean, legally, from the legal point of view...
I, I don't think there's a requirement, but, but the, the, the school district would reimburse the interest on that.
Okay.
I mean, they would have to.
That's just the question I have.
Yeah, that would be what, what is fair. So that is another concession that, that the district would be willing to make. To get to the, the deal that, um, we understand, at least.
And I guess...
Some property owners would agree to.
So if we're gonna draft a resolution or propose a resolution, we need to give staff direction. So I think at some point, Mr. Rankin needs to come back and, I guess, represent the 75% that he represents. Because if we're gonna draft a resolution that's gonna become a permanent document, we're either gonna need to reconvene, um, because now we're amending the local, the reimbursement district. Right? We're amending, we're, we're adding a clause, or I'm not sure what we're doing. But if we wanna get it done by this year, either we do it tonight, or we're gonna have to come back and have another meeting to adopt the resolution. I mean, there were certain members of the audience who think a walk-on resolution is an illegal thing and that violates public meeting law. But that's exactly what we're proposing to do tonight. Are we not?
The, um, excuse me, the, the resolution, in 2009 resolution establishing the district included a section three, that the benefiting, the amount to be paid by each benefiting property would increase annually on the resolution's anniversary date at 4% simple interest. So what we'd be doing is, is amending that resolution or adopting, in, in practical terms, adopting a new resolution on top of this old one that would change that requirement.
Amending the resolution.
Effectively.
Yeah.
To, to take out the, the, or modify the interest requirement.
So what we have on our, in our packet on page 80 is a new reimburse, is a new resolution extending the reimbursement. But it doesn't mention anything about interest.
It doesn't change the substantive terms of the district.
Right.
Right, yeah, all, all that resolution that's in front of you, which the amendment...
It's just the extension.
Yeah, it's just the extension. And, um, certainly based on testimony received, council can make additional, you know, modifications, you know, to the interest and things like that. I'd wanna make sure that we're being clear, that we're not amending the, the reimbursement district. And, I mean, the, the methodology and how, um, how the reimbursement district was going to be calculated is set and has been vetted through the court systems and things like that. So I'd wanna make, you know, be very careful that we're not doing anything that's actually modifying that. We're modifying the interest, we're modifying the turn, you know, the length, but not the actual assumptions that went into the reimbursement district.
So... Linda?
Yeah, I have one more thing, but go ahead.
Respectfully, I, I disagree with you. I think if we can come to a conclusion and they can work things out, we oughta get it done. That's, that's my feeling.
On that note, can I just inject a thought about the settlement negotiations?
Why don't you join the tables? It's her both, talking with both of them.
That way you don't have to look so far away.
Yeah.
So, the one question that nobody, that I have, that, that's been weighing on me was, this is a large tract of land that, as Counselor King put, the Mandel family was just going to wait out the reimbursement district and not develop. So that land has X amount of value as dirt and grass and probably a large amount of clay, as Frank Zake and I were talking about, clay. Versus if the Mandel family were able to develop that land, as Rich Look did, as Daybreak is, is it Daybreak? A new subdivision who, uh, the young lady, Emma Kyle, her and her mom, her mom just bought a new home in that subdivision. What's the value of that land if it develops? And the value of the land obviously goes up when a house goes on it, because then we get STCs. The school district gets money, TBFNR gets money, PCC gets money. And so I don't know what the cost benefit analysis is of, you know, the Mandel family waiting for that property to just be vacant and then developing it in sometime after 2023 versus, um, moving forward. And how do we all benefit? And, you know, that's more of a philosophical question, I guess. And it is a technical question, but it begs some sort of research.
Counsel President, I can give you some objective numbers, and I'll defer to the, to counsel for the Mandels and the school district to, to go beyond that. But, um, it's a 23-acre piece. It's owned, I believe, medium-density residential. And the, um, housing density range is somewhere between seven and 12 dwelling units per acre. So times 23 acres, um, take out some for infrastructure, and you're looking at a, a lot of houses. And the transportation SD, or, uh, fee, reimbursement fee is 440,000 or about 18,000 per acre, divided among seven to 12 houses, say nine or 10 houses. So you'd be looking at about 1,800, 2,000 per house, per dwelling, uh, for the transportation reimbursement fee. There's additional for sewer water. But it's probably gonna work out less than the STCs and TIF per dwelling unit.
Respectfully, the, the development itself of that property won't be in anything greater than probably six dwelling units per net acre. It's not gonna be up in the 12 range. I've done some analysis and look at it at this point. 5,000 square foot lots is what would work best under a planned development. You might get a little more density, uh, but, uh, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be the dense development that, uh, Chris, you're suggesting there.
Okay, Mr. Rankin, I have a couple of questions I just wanna ask you. Could you live with the agreement and the extension if we eliminated all of the interest?
From 2008?
Yes.
Through an extension?
Yes.
Before I answer that question, can I give you, uh, what happened here? Cause I think it needs to be on the record. On December 1st, uh, we received the offer and compromise from the school district. On December 12th, uh, I got back to the school district, so that was last Friday. The terms that I laid out, uh, after consultation with my clients, the 75% owners, and my non-clients, the other side of the Mandel family. Remember, too, I represent the Labons as well. So there's two families, 75% and ED, uh, ED LLC is the Labon family at this point. Uh, I wrote back to Kelly on, uh, on Friday and said, uh, here's the counter-proposal terms. Respectfully and based on public testimony, the Mandel family will be willing to accept the following counter-proposal terms. Number one, reduce the interest rate to zero from 2008 with city approval. Number two, reduce the original reimbursement fee to 500,000 with city approval. Uh, number three, Mandel family will actively begin marketing their property for sale to a buyer in 2015. The reason for that is obvious. We are trying to get some money to the school district. If the school district and the city will, will do something that in good faith, I think, would be fair and just and reasonable in this case. And number four, the school district withdraws its current extension application, reserving the right to submit it at a later date. Not holding them, their hands behind their back and saying, you can't do it anymore. Uh, that's the proposal that we put forth on Friday. I didn't get anything back. I come in here tonight.
Oh, I emailed you today.
Well, I didn't get it.
Well, I did email you this morning. I did.
I'm sorry, I apologize. But I come in here tonight and I get chosen first. I understand that there's been communication going on between, uh, school district council and city council and staff.
John, you and I have talked offline many, many times.
Well, I, I understand, but the time we talked, Chris, and I'll bring this up right now, is the time I talked to Mr. Crane was after I learned that you folks had adopted an ordinance in June, or whenever it was, the change in the ordinance that allows for the extension. I called Mr. Crane on the phone and I said, Chris, my golly, what happened here? Nobody gave us any notice. We didn't get any notice. Nobody on the Mandel family got notice.
I forgot to mention that, but that was one thing that bothered me, Chris.
I, I just, I couldn't believe it. And I, I asked Chris, I said, well, did you know about this, what's been going on? He said he didn't know much about it. It was the school district requesting city staff to do some things. I come to find out in public testimony today that he has been involved all along. At least that's what the representation is at this point. So I don't wanna just muddy the water here, but my God, I've gotta be honest with you. This has got to be played out fairly and appropriately. It's got to be done in a way that all of us can walk away and feel like, maybe, you know how compromises are? Everybody walks away not feeling real good, but happy it's over finally.
It's like the contract, everybody benefits from the, the deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
I have a suggestion. What makes me feel the most comfortable, number one, I think it's important that we recognize that people did develop under the current co- uh, contract, or deal. Uh, I agree with Counsel King that a deal's a deal. However, I also agree that the extension is needed. What would make me comfortable is if we extended the con, extended the district for five years, but waived all interest at, during the extension. But anybody that builds, but, but the existing 10-year agreement stays exactly the same during the 10 years. Extent, and, and then during the five-year extension, principal only, no interest. That's what I like. So that's not even what either of you have said, it's something in between. But, um, uh, I like that the best.
I, I like the elimination of the interest since the school district was willing to go for. That's, that was, you know, I understand they're waiting 10 years and that's the interest. And you made a good argument on that. There, the people who wanted to get in first got in and they paid the money, but they need to be reimbursed that if we eliminate it for everybody. And now...
It's the school district who would reimburse it.
Yes, yes. And they already, you pretty much agreed that you would do that. So my main, my, I would agree to extend five years, eliminate all interest. Just because you, to me, that's just the way it should be. We shouldn't have put interest on it. It was put on, but I think we should go back to no interest and reimburse the people that paid it. Can anybody live with that?
Yes, the, the district will live with that.
So I, I just wanna add, um, thank you for answering all of our questions. I, I think that this is very difficult. I, I also want to reveal that I had a contact with Pat Allen contacted me. It was late in November, just to tell me that this was kind of coming down the pike. He didn't give me any additional information that hasn't already been discussed, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, um, to be completely above board. And if you want any, ask us any questions about the contact. He just said that the negotiation was ongoing and they were hoping to be able to achieve, uh, an agreement. And I think that that's where we're trying to get. I think that, um, the Mandels are, uh, they, they're saying that, you know, they, they are acknowledging that a betterment has been achieved, that they've received a betterment. There is a betterment there. What is the betterment? That's, that's the box that we're trying to get to. I think that a good case has been made on the extension. They, they've met the two criteria that we put before them. So I agree with Mayor Milton. I, I think that the interest, um, is onerous. I think that it seems arbitrary on a depreciating asset. It seems backwards to me to add an interest to a depreciating asset. I understand that it's a longstanding depreciating asset, but it's still a depreciating asset. So, um, I agree that, um, I would feel comfortable with a five-year extension if you removed the interest from the beginning.
You wanna put that in motion form?
Uh, sure. We're gonna have to, um...
It's gonna go back to staff.
Right. I'd actually like assistance because you're gonna have to alter the resolution, so Julia...
And we're working on it right now. Chris is actually, um, we did have some, um, potential language with a different scenario. So Chris and I have been...
Do you need a break?
No, I think we're good. So basically what we're, what, to do what you are saying, what we were hearing and Chris and I were frantically writing, is, um, keeping section one as-is, um, which is the Area 59 reimbursement district authorized by, via resolution 2008-0011, is hereby extended to March 4, 2023. Adding a new section two, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to read it out loud, cause I can't read his handwriting.
Yeah. Just... I turned it off. You would, um, delete section two and insert in its place a new section two that says, "Section three, resolution 2008 dash 011 is repealed." That's the section in the 2008 resolution that imposed the 4% interest. Then section three, a new section three for this resolution, um, "The amount paid by each benefiting property shall not include an amount for interest." Section four, "The Sherwood School District shall refund to a person who paid the reimbursement fee prior to the effective date of this resolution, an amount equal to the interest paid." And then section five would be this resolution approval upon, uh, effective upon approval and adoption. So we get, we repealed it, sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. That, um, there's actually two more wherethes, the existing section two, which would now be section five, which says, "The city recorder shall provide notice in accordance with, um, 13.24.070 and record the resolution in accordance with 13.24.080." And then the new section six would be, "This resolution shall be effective upon approval and adoption."
Sorry, I was working from a different version. But yes, you take what I read and insert it following section one in the or, the proposed ordinance on page 80 of your packet.
Mr. Crane?
So sections three, two and three would be renumbered five and six.
What's section four?
Section four, um, requires the school district to refund to a person who paid the fee prior to the effective date of the, this resolution, an amount equal to the interest paid by that person.
It's all refunded.
The interest only is refunded, right. Right. So section two repeals the 4% interest requirement. Section three says, specifically says that a benefiting property pays a reimbursement amount that does not include interest. Section four requires repayment of the interest paid by somebody who's already paid the fee. Section five requires the city recorder to, uh, provide notice of, uh, the resolution, and then six, and section six is the effective date.
I move that we, uh...
Amend.
Amend resolution 2014-073 as instructed by our counsel, Chris Crane.
One second.
One discussion item?
Go ahead.
If this, if this motion, uh, were to fail, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the interest only during the five-year extension. Go ahead.
So are you adding that as an amendment?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm just, as a matter of discussion, I prefer, I prefer only waive the interest during the extension. So if this motion to amend fails, I'm gonna make a new motion... So if this motion to amend fails, I'm going to make a new motion to amend. That's all I'm saying.
I'm just going to stick, we're going to go ahead and vote.
On the amended.
On the amended.
On the amendment to the resolution.
Council Butterfield is the second.
Seconded.
So Mayor, with the resolution, you just call for a roll call.
Right, right. Okay, is everybody, everybody done? Okay, we'll take a roll.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How do the two of you feel about it?
I think we've heard it.
The district agrees.
I mean, I'm just trying to get a clarification on what you said.
Well, I've got, you know, I'm representing my clients and then I've got other Mandel family members in the room, too.
And you said you wanted to offer them the option of having the extension.
Yes.
That's what you were agreeing to.
Yes, exactly. We wanted no extension. You heard what I read to you. Zero interest, of course, remove the interest, reduce the reimbursement amount itself to give the school district something, some modicum of compensation for the risk that they're taking. And then the Mandel family will actively market the property. We haven't done that to this point.
I understand that.
So we start, I mean, we're doing something. We're trying to actively market the property. And then finally, don't extend, but they can always come back between now and 2018 if the Mandel family fails to sell the property and it fails to develop in time, that this money comes to the school district.
Okay, we have a motion on the table now. And I think everybody's question's been answered. Go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Three.
Four, three.
Four, three.
Okay.
So I move that we adopt the resolution as amended, 2014-073.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So just to clarify, we had three nay votes on the motion to amend, and then we had unanimous vote on the amended motion.
Yes.
On the amended resolution.
On the amended resolution, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and attention to this. And it makes me think of David Mandel's statement about some other cities that had some difficulty with reimbursement districts. It seems like they've fallen out of favor, and I can kind of understand why now.
I hope we really did go over this and we read everything, and I hope everybody is sort of happy. We can't make everybody happy, but I think we made everybody sort of happy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, does anybody need another break?
That is true.
Nope. Okay, these are going to be very fast. Ordinance 20...
It's got in here.
Yeah, he's right there. Ordinance 2014-020, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Electrical Specialty Code declaring an emergency.
Is this on?
Right. It's like, all right.
Good evening, Scott McKee, city building official. This ordinance and the following two after this are similar, so the staff report will be basically the same. The state building code is applicable in uniform throughout the state of Oregon. The code consists of several individual model codes that are specific to the code that they address. These codes are periodically updated or amended, and the new additions are adopted by the state of Oregon, BCD Building Codes Division. Once these codes are adopted, individual jurisdictions that have a building inspection program are then also required to adopt the codes. So this ordinance is to amend the city municipal code to reflect the current state adopted code. Stacey, is that any, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Do we have any questions? We don't need a public hearing on this.
You can, you can accept comments, yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments? We'll close the public hearing. We heard the staff report. Does anybody want to make a motion?
We approved those in 2014-021.
Second.
I'm sorry, read Captain Duff.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Mayor, I need to do a roll call.
It's an ordinance, okay, roll call.
Ordinance 2014-020, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Electrical Specialty Code declaring an emergency. Counsel King.
Aye.
Counsel Clark.
Aye.
Counsel Langer.
Aye.
Counsel Butterfield.
Aye.
Counsel Grant.
Aye.
Counsel President Henderson.
Aye.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2014-021, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code declaring an emergency. And he's already said that it's in our staff report. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up on this? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Have a motion.
Move, read Captain Duff, ordinance 2014-021.
Sorry.
Ordinance 2014-021, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code declaring an emergency. Counsel King.
Aye.
Counsel Clark.
Aye.
Counsel Langer.
Aye.
Counsel Butterfield.
Aye.
Counsel Grant.
Aye.
Counsel President Henderson.
Aye.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2014-022, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Residential Specialty Code declaring an emergency. Staff report's been presented. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments? Okay.
Did you fill out a form?
The remarks I'm going to make relate to everything you've adopted to date. I do not believe you understand that your building department is empowered to first verify that you have drawings, specifications to meet those codes, or the equivalent. Now try to understand what I'm saying there. That is a mechanical perfunctory job. Number two, they are to absolutely make sure that you have a licensed contractor, if it is a commercial relationship. Mr. Gall has been good enough to interact with the state construction and contractors group, and he can verify that they have changed rules dramatically. I mean dramatically. And they're going to change again next year even tighter. And the third thing they do is they inspect the work done by those licensed contractors, nothing else. They don't look at the character of the builder, they don't look at the character of the developer, because over here they've got sovereign immunity. They do their job, you can't sue them personally. The only solution for a public servant that thinks he is too clever, or she is too clever, to follow the law is to fire him. You can't collect a dime from him. Now they're changing slowly. Yonkers versus New York was the beginning of it for most of us. But try to understand, that's what Mr. Gall has brought here to your building department. They follow those rules, and anything else he recognizes is ultravariety. Be careful the codes you pass, because you're getting a reputation for writing codes that let you give away something, as you did to Dr. Nathan Doyle. And notice I'm using names, that you're refusing other applicants with the same zoning and in fact, a better history. Why is that happening? I would suggest because you were unpaid and because you were looking for ways to get various funds, such as transfer, such as political funds. That's a mistake. Our government's not set up that way. But this thing we've been doing, it's been doing for four years, and it's just starting to have its effect. But I'm telling you, make sure that you understand what you're adopting here, is he is to follow those, he's not to invent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? All right, public hearing is closed.
Move, read, caption, adopt, and ordinance 2014-022.
Second.
Ordinance 2014-022, amending the terms of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, relating to the adoption of the Oregon Residential Specialty Code declaring an emergency. Counsel King.
Aye.
Counsel Clark.
Aye.
Counsel Langer.
Aye.
Counsel Butterfield.
Aye.
Counsel Grant.
Aye.
Counsel President Henderson.
Aye.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, our next part of business is resolution 2014-078, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Julie Blum.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before you start, I need to recuse myself.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is a staff report requesting expenditure appropriation via supplemental budget to make payment that is due on a reconfiguration agreement we have with the developer related to costs for reconfiguring their property in order for us to put through Langer Farms Parkway, Langer Farms Parkway North. That's what this is for tonight.
Okay, I have some people that would like to speak on this. Tony Bevel.
Anthony Bevel, 17036 Southwest Lindley Way, Sherwood. We're missing a good part of the holiday season here. I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas. And for some people in the audience, it's going to be a real, real Merry Christmas to the tune of $890,000. This, the resolution says that it was thoroughly reviewed and analyzed by the city staff, a third-party reviewer, and the city attorney. I tried to find it, I couldn't see where that is. I mean, is this supplemental budget, is it there for viewing by the citizenry? I couldn't find it, maybe I'm dense, but be that may, as it may. It's going to be a very Merry Christmas. So $890,000, I'm glad that the city has the funds to just, you know, give that away. I'd really like to see, maybe, just maybe it is a valid bill, but I think we as citizens have a right to see how that is accounted for. Thank you. And again, a sincerely Merry Christmas.
Naomi Bella.
I'm just struck by the stark difference between what we just dealt with and now. The school district was asking, it needs money, apparently, right? And now we're giving away close to $1 million in funds that are coming out of the general fund. I emailed Joe Gall, he would not answer me, so I was not able to come up with any answers. Where's the money, where's the money coming from? Was it owed? Was it contractual? Obviously, you don't honor contracts, and I really appreciated Dan King's comments because that's what our government is built on, and then you all just, not all of you, but rewrote the contract for the Mandel family. So I just don't feel like you're, you're inventing the rules, as Mr. Claus always says, reinventing the rules. One thing that I would like to see, if you're going to follow contracts, is why are the Langer family, why aren't they being asked to pay back the $1.5 million for the south section of Langer Farms Parkway? In addition, the $500,000, half a million, for the Century Drive extension, both rose, which directly affect and benefited their development. Adams Street wasn't even, you know, couldn't carry the traffic that now Walmart has attracted. So are those monies going to be given back to the citizens and to the UR fund? That's $2 million, right? Is there any discussion about that? Who should I ask? Joe Gall?
This is the time for you to give testimony. If the council wants to ask staff questions, we can provide those answers. So Julia has more of the background.
Okay, she told me I had to pay $600 to get any answers. I don't have an extra $600 to pay to get these answers. I feel like you are supposed to have a transparent enough budget that we can figure out in the money that we pay towards, you know, the UR bond or whatever, to give, to tell us where the monies are going to. If we're giving the Langers $2 million and then owe another $890,000 today, why are we being taxed? And then you're just like handing out money to developers. I mean, sure, it's in the UR district, and the city does get additional income into the general fund, right?
May I get a clarification or something? The money that's coming to pay for this is coming from SDCs?
Point of order, this is the time for public testimony, this is a question and answer period.
That's correct.
But I do, that's a good question, I don't know.
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Like, where is the money coming from? Is it SDCs, is it...
My suggestion, Ms. Bella, is after we're done with the public testimony, staff will provide more information in response to questions from council.
Okay, and I'm just curious if all members of the council are equally informed, you know, do they even know where the money is coming from? Is it, it just fall out of the sky? Because apparently we don't have extra money. If you're going to go take money from farmers who could not develop their land, and then you're going to say, oh, you can't develop your land, you're going to, you can't, if you don't pay this $1 million in SDC fees, and in addition, we're going to charge you 4% interest, well, still, you're preventing them from developing. They don't necessarily want, sure, they got a road which now is depreciating, but you're just not treating your citizens equally. And it's not fair, and I want more answers to the questions. I'm sure many other residents would as well. And if they knew about this, I think you would just have, this room would be packed right now. It's obviously late at night, so, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Taylor.
I looked and looked and looked at the agenda today in resolution 204-dash-078. Doesn't really tell me where this money is going, if I'm just looking at it online. Luckily enough, there was a little bit more information, so we could dig a little further to see that it was going to go to Mr. Langer and the Langer Group. So then I tried to Google some more information and go on the website, the city website, and try to find more information. Obviously, it was something that Mr. Mays, one of the last things he did before he left office was to put together that this would be given back. I would just ask that you table this for 30 days or so, so that there can be more information given to citizens, and they can actually come and see what it is, or at least it can be posted online, so that we know where this money is going. It seems to me it's about a fourth of a budget of the current budget for maybe the next three years or something. It just, I was trying to do some numbers with it. It's a huge amount to give to anyone without having a lot of documentation, and there really is no documentation. I don't know if the new road entrance has been done yet, or if this is a projection, and if it's just a projection, is there a way the Langers will come back and ask for more money? Is this all the money? If it costs them less to do this, will they be giving the city back some money? I mean, if we really care about the taxpayers, as I've heard you all say tonight, my question is, where is the line items? How do I know exactly how much it costs to do this? This is, did we pluck this out of air? I mean, Linda, last time you talked about you were in HR, and people were accountable, and X and Y and Z, and people weren't at meetings, and why weren't they there? To me, this is very faulty mathematics. There is nothing to document where this money is going, why it was asked for, and why a specific amount. You have to, when you're asking for taxpayer's money, be accountable for it, and there is no accountability. Thank you.
I will bring this back to council now, since I have no other comment forms. Oh, you did? Come on back up, I've got so many of them.
Robert James Claus, 222-11 Southwest Pacific. I'm not surprised at this at all. We get tough guys on the council that give you mean looks and the likes, but I'd like to ask you a question. Have I heard anything about...
you a question. Have I heard anything about ex parte contact up there from any of your council? Now, three of you were explicitly supported by the Langers. Was there any connection between this? Was there any connection between this giveaway urban renewal district that's now turned into the cleverest lunch stealing program for schoolchildren in the history of Oregon? Stands alone. Every urban professor I've talked to uses this as the prime example of what happens when you let urban renewal get dictated by people who are after the money. Now, here we're sitting, and we know you took money from Washington County. They expected back. That was part of a public hearing. Didn't get it back. That played out in sunset. Now we find miraculously you got put on the council, Mr. King, just like that, because they needed the fourth vote. You were it. Because if these two people had walked out and you were here, you were not here, they wouldn't have the vote. Now, that looks suspicious. I mean, I know you guys wouldn't do anything like that because we've seen how you evolutedly play your zoning. And I think some of you are starting to get it, that we've got it finally of what you're doing. But I think you ought to sit down once and for all and ask yourself, what the hell are you doing building Big Box International in a secondary zone that's not performing the way it should? We're paying for the goddamn mess urban renewal you started over there, and that's urban sprawl, and it's urban sprawl of the worst kind. There's no environmental safety guards over there for the refuge. They know it. Now, we find out we paid for the roads out of other developers' money. Understand, this is other people's money now. It wouldn't be you folks' money, because most of you in the business are stealing it from us. But people ask you questions, and you're insulted by the questions. And look at the last election. You shouldn't have been insulted. No way you should have lost that election. Anybody knows anything about election results, no, it should have been a walkover. It wasn't. And that's because we're all asking the same questions. How much money's gone over there? Where is his legal opinion? Who's the person that backed him up? There should all be a legal opinion. We should say, oh, I forget. He's in the same boat Martha Stewart was. You've done anything wrong. You served the time. He sings the song. He's not responsible for what he put in opinion. You are. But I don't think it's going to make any difference because nothing makes any difference here until we kick you out of office. And then there's those among you that are too dumb to get that. That's an untruthy, nonreactive measure. We don't think you were doing a good job. I know that's a big term. Go home and explain it to your third grader.
Okay. Now, I'll bring it back to council.
I have a few comments.
Mayor and council, would you like a brief presentation from Ms. Hyde Duke about what this is? I think the public wants some more information to give it some context, at least. Then there may be some additional questions from council after hearing that.
Go ahead.
I think Julie and I are going to kind of do this together.
Could you, could you trade mics? It's easier to hear through that one.
Is that better?
Much.
Okay. So, to start off with, this was public notice as required by the state. It's been on our website, on the homepage, for several weeks. The staff report does explain where the funds are coming from. This is coming from the street SDCs, the city street SDCs. This is not coming from the general fund. It is not coming from urban renewal. This is a normal course of business. When we do public infrastructures and we impact private property, normal course of business for cities is to enter into an agreement to pay for our impact on their private property. We do this all the time. Right-of-way acquisitions, this is normal course of business for the city. This reconfiguration agreement was done several years ago. We did have an impact on the property for Sentinel Storage. And what we did was, we looked at what was covered in the reconfiguration agreement, the items that were impacted, and this is the cost for those items that were impacted. We brought a third-party consultant in to review everything, to make sure that we were looking at this correctly, and we were crossing every T and dotting every I. And this is, this is what we owe for our impact on that property. So, Julia can give you more detail.
Yes, I will. And I think Chris wanted to add a few things, too. Just to clarify what this is for, is when Langer Farms Parkway went in north of Tuolton Sherwood Road, the driveway to the existing Sentinel Storage site was actually where that road went through. They actually ended up having to do a temporary access that's not a permanent location. So, it's still operating, and it still looks like it's functioning, but the access is not a permanent access, and that needs to be relocated. And it needs to be relocated to Langer Farms Parkway to meet spacing and access standards. We knew that when the development agreement was signed. We knew that when the reconfiguration agreement was entered into, that we were going to need to relocate that access. And in relocating the access, you were relocating the office, the security system, the gates, infrastructure, parking. So, there's a lot of impacts that are, that are affected when you're doing that. And that's, like Julie said, that's the cost. We went through, we had ACC architectural cost construction estimating, run through the numbers in detail. And, you know, we do have, you know, this, this much for four feet of asphalt, this thick. And so, we've got the numbers that are very pinned down, and we're very comfortable that that is the minimum necessary. And we did go through it with a fine-tooth comb, and where, you know, we had to agree on what was included in the scope of what was to be reimbursed. So, initially, there might have been a discussion, and this is just sort of examples off the top of my head, you know, of they, because of the trenching that was necessary for utilities, they thought the entire driveway needed to be reasphalted. And we said, no. Our engineering, you know, experience says you don't need to actually redo the whole thing. You can do a little, you know, so we narrowed down the amount of asphalt that was being included. We, you know, made some adjustments so that we weren't paying any more than was absolutely necessary to accommodate the parking relocation, things like that. That's kind of what we were looking through, what we went through with a fine-tooth comb. Do you have anything that you wanted to add, Chris, on, you said that you had some things that you wanted to add based on testimony?
Yeah, this one. I've been, in my file, I have this aerial photograph of what the site looked like before Adams North, I still call it Adams, Langer Farms Parkway North went in. When I started here, by the way, in 2006, the goals, the council goals up on the wall behind Counsel Grant said, build Adams Avenue. And now, here we are, eight years later, and this is frankly the final step. And it took city money, county money, SDCs. I know that when the Walmart went in, there's a lot of right-of-way that got dedicated for that and Century. It was really a combined effort, city, county, local development, community, everyone. And this is one of the final pieces. But when I look at this map, or this, I guess it's a Google probably of aerial, the driveway is right opposite what was Adams South, is now Langer Farms Parkway. So, when we put that road north, we cut off the access to the Sentinel self-storage. And whenever there's a city or a county or ODOT or anyone cuts off access to a property, you have to provide, quote, reasonable alternative access, end quote. Doesn't have to be their preferred access, doesn't have to be the, you know, the Cadillac model access, but it's got to be reasonable alternative access. We knew that when we were doing the development agreement that required them to build Adams North, Langer Farms Parkway North. And so, we said, all right. We sat down, we said, this, and this is attached to the development, to the reconfiguration agreement. These are the improvements we said the city would pay for. This is what we decided would be reasonable alternative access. And the reconfiguration agreement requires us to pay for these improvements. Well, we got the bids in and included some other stuff that we didn't think was right. So, we went and we hired the city, not relying on Sentinel's documents or experts. We hired our own architectural cost consultants, and I've got 15 pages of fine print detail about what they think it takes to build this. And we went back to the Sentinel folks, and we said, this is what we agreed to. This is what it's going to cost, $890,000. And that's where we, how we got to where we are today. So, when people say, what are we buying? We're not buying a road. We're complying with our legal obligation to provide reasonable alternative access to a property that lost access when we put through a public road. The same thing happens when it's, I mean, Julie was exactly right. Municipalities, ODOT, states do this all the time. Whenever you put through a right-of-way, if you cut off access, you've got to provide reasonable alternative access. Years ago, we agreed that this constitutes reasonable alternative access. We have it priced out by our own consultants who say it's $890,000. And we, we have, as Julie said, or Julia said, been through this with a fine-tooth comb, and we believe it's a reasonable number.
So, may I ask, what was the date of the, of the reconfiguration drawing that you were showing us?
The reconfiguration agreement was entered into in 2012, September of 2012. Do you guys have, I brought extra copies if you don't have them. It's already, I think you got emailed that by.
Yeah, we don't have it in our packet.
Yeah, it's not in your packet, but it's.
We re- emailed.
So, at what point did you, and maybe you're going to get to this, Julia, so if I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry. At what point did you receive a request from the Langer, from Sentinel Storage after the realignment, alternative entrances were finished? At what point did you receive what was sort of the beginning number, and then you started working up to what you agreed on, I assume, which was November 18th?
Yeah, mid-April. And then there was a lot of discussion about what was included in the scope and the bids. And then we, we took time to get that, that third-party outside reviewer, and then had some discussions beyond that.
So, why couldn't we have anticipated that in the budget? I just have a question. Why didn't we anticipate that? Instead of two weeks before our last meeting, we're given this now, and it just seems suspicious. You know, I mean, hey, yeah, I mean.
I do understand the timing seems odd. But at the time when we put the budget together, we didn't know. We didn't know what the cost would be. And that's what supplementals are for, is for us to come back later and say, okay, we now know what this is. If we'd thrown a number out, we'd be back here probably anyway doing this because we would have been wrong. So.
But it would have given us an idea we're going to be out of another $890,000. I mean, we could have told the public that this is in progress, and this is where it may end up. If you started in April, that's even before the budget. Couldn't we have done it that way?
Well, that was, the April was, was, that's when we got it. It took us time to review it, push, you know, push back, frankly, question it, get outside. So, the number that came in in April was about half of the number that we actually, well.
So, we put that in the budget?
The number we have is half.
Was half of what they were asking?
Yes.
But we had no knowledge you were even negotiating this. I guess that's.
When the budget was put together last year, we wouldn't have known if it was $200,000 or $2 million.
But you, you tell people that there is going to be something coming up.
And I think there was something in the budget, but it was, you know, it was nearly $800,000.
It wasn't $100,000.
It wasn't.
No. And, I mean, I just don't understand why becoming the last meeting of this council to do this now, and we really haven't let the public know what's going on. We didn't even know till two weeks ago.
So, money was allocated in last year's budget for this because we thought we'd be done with this project before June 30th. And so, nothing, we didn't move forward with anything because we thought we'd be done with it. Timing-wise, their request didn't come in till late. There's no way we could have, I could have gotten it into this year's budget. I think the expectation was still that we'd get through this and be done by June 30th. So, I don't think, nobody was trying to hide anything. It's all a timing issue.
Well, how much was allocated?
Originally, we had allocated $250,000. But that was based on an estimate five years ago that didn't take into account all of the different changes. And when the work was finally, when the road was finally put through, the changes were more extensive than we had originally thought.
So, the next people that do the budget may be in for a surprise on their last meeting that we might need another $1 million for something, correct? If, if we're not given a heads up, at least looking forward. I mean, we, if this was done in April, we knew we were going to get hit with something.
The request came in April. It took weeks to get through it and.
Well, I guess, I understand what you're saying. But what, what it seems like is that this was a very secretive agreement. And so, that's just me as council. I think we should have been informed a long time ago of the progress of what's going on when we're giving this much money. SDCs are not, because that pays for our local roads, too. We will have roads now we can't pave because we're giving this money out. And I just think it's unfair to the public, for us as a council, not to know what's going on so we can talk to our constituents about it. I think this was really poorly done.
Mayor, I do want to clarify that we're not just giving money out. We're complying with the city's legal obligation.
We're complying with it, correct.
Under contract. And I, you know, I have to apologize partly myself for the timing. There was a substantial, we lost all, most of July because I was out of town.
Then what's wrong now with, we put it off for a couple months?
Let's not argue with Steph. I think you've made your point.
I'm talking to him. I'm not talking to you.
The agreement actually requires that we make payment within 21 days of the date that the parties reach agreement on the amount. And we're already beyond that. And, you know, frankly, I don't think anybody's going to sue anybody right away. But if we keep putting this off, we put the authority, we put that decision in somebody else's hands. And if this did go to court, we'd end up paying exactly the same amount that we're requesting to be paid right now, plus probably attorney's fees and legal costs and everything else.
Okay, all I'm asking is that next time we do this, be more open with the council. Let us know what's going on for a year. So.
Julie, quick question. It doesn't make any difference if it was Mr. Claus or me, whoever owned that piece of property was going to get the benefit of, correct?
Yes.
So, it's something we do every day.
Yes, we've done development agreements.
Time in, time out.
And I would argue, maybe people won't agree, there isn't a benefit that is being given. They are being reimbursed for the cost to make their site whole as a result of having to relocate their access. So, I just want to make that really clear. And the other thing is, is that there was some testimony about Langer, Graymore, and I know to the public, it's not different, but it is. This is Sentinel Storage LLC. It's not Langer Family LLC or Graymore Langer LLC. And so, they're different entities. And so, the entity that built roads, or the entities that got system development credits, or even, you know, the entities with development agreements, they're not the property owner that's impacted by this. We, we have to compensate. And I've got a list of examples of, when we did Pine Street, we had 47 property transaction, you know, different case files compensating, you know, looking at what are your impacts? How much right-of-way are we getting? Do we need a temporary construction easement? Do we need a permanent easement? All, that's part of any road project. This is a large amount of money, yes, but it's not an abnormal concept or process. So.
Okay, I agree with you there. All I want you to do, we've got council people in here that are going to be the next council, be open, honest, upfront. Let them know ahead what's going on. So, the perception is, we're educated on this, and we can speak to our public. We are elected to talk to the public and let them know what's going on. So.
I just want to add that, as far as I'm concerned, there's no behind-the-closet deal. There's no secretive crap going on anywhere within the city. It hasn't happened, not while I've been here, and it's not going to happen when I leave.
Got that right.
So, I have a question. How does this compare to Billitt? So, when, when we needed to improve Oregon Street and improve the railroad crossing there, not only so that Langer Farms Parkway could, could, south or what used to be Adams would be improved, which has been on the TSP for 20 years, TSP meaning Transportation System Plan, we had to alter, we had to take some of his land to improve the, the, Bill Blakeslee, and we had to widen the road. And then we had to change an entrance. I remember there was a temporary entrance down across the railroad tracks. So, that's a similar situation, right? Where the business was impacted?
It was, it was similar, but not exactly. There were no building impacts. There were some, there was a slight access change, as I understand it. But that, that's an example of what happens when you, you don't have agreement.
Right.
They, the, the information I have, the right-of-way acquisition costs were appraised for $11,200. And normally, what you do is you say, here's the appraisal, here's what we're going to offer you. And most times, that's generally agreed to. Sometimes that goes up a little bit more just to kind of settle out of court. Sometimes that goes up a little bit more just to kind of settle out of court. From the numbers I have, that project with, because of the litigation, because it went to court, the judgment was for $187,000. So it was significantly more than the appraised value of those impacts. And that's kind of what happens when you go to court, is that you're getting, you're paying attorney's fees, you're paying a lot, a lot more things out of your control. The numbers that are, that are being reimbursed are real numbers for real improvements. It's not a theoretical damages that we're, we're paying a number that isn't substantiated or there isn't, you know, verification for. These are numbers that we've really been able to validate based on, here's, here's construction, you know, here's what it would actually be, this is what it would cost to reconfigure the site as, as needed.
Right. So just like with a, this is in the Urban Renewal District, these are SDCs, just like in a facade grant, we pay for certain things in the facade grant. So people will submit a facade grant, and they'll list all the things that they want to do for the building, but we only pay for permanent improvements to the building. Like we wouldn't, we might pay for new siding or, or paint, but we're not going to pay for a new sign. Okay? So we do an accounting of what we're willing to pay for based on the agreement or the, whatever the statute allows us to reimburse. Same issue we have with the Cultural Arts Center. There are certain things we cannot buy with urban renewal dollars that aren't fixed to the building, that are a permanent fixture. And so we, we go through, or what you did is go through and look at every reimbursement that they requested and look to see if it was part of the original agreement, right? The original agreement, which was signed in 2012, right? Which is...
And those original bids came in between 1.2 and 1.5 billion, so a number of things we determined were not within the scope of the agreement.
Right. And these are for temporary improvements or realignments that have already been done, right?
No.
Or some have been done.
The, the reconfiguration hasn't been, and they have a temporary driveway that allows them to continue to function. Otherwise, they would have been closed from the day Langer Farms Parkway was open.
Right.
So they had to have a temporary driveway location so they can continue to operate their building.
This money is for them to make those improvements.
Right.
Right.
Right, which will be permanent?
Yes.
Thank, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I was going to say, the other thing I wanted to point out was back when you and I were on council, in 2008, we extended the PUD, and that was based on them doing the road, and they saved the city quite a amount of money.
Well, they put the road in long before we would have been able to afford to put it in.
Exactly. And so there was a huge cost savings there also, that saved the city approximately $3 million.
And that was a function of the development agreement.
Right.
So, which was a compromise on both ends, where each one, each person, not to bring up the previous subject, had a benefit, or received a benefit. So I, I understand some of the mayor's comments, but just the fact that the Langer, that Sentinel Storage is owned by the Langer family really has nothing to do with the fact that we knew this was coming, they received the original request in April, they came to an agreement on November 18th, which, that date has passed if we're supposed to pay them within 21 days, but we didn't have a meeting on December 1st or 2nd. So, you know, it's an obligation that we need to take care of, and it's not like we budget SDCs because we don't know what SDCs we're going to get. I mean, we have a rolling fund as, as Julia has put in here, of which, you know, the current balance is more than the amount of the obligation, and this is the obligation that we need to meet. So that they can continue to do, conduct business the same way we did for Pine Street, for Billitt, for anybody who, or the water pipeline that we had to take land or, you know, change entrances. I mean, we want to talk about, we want to talk about dollars, let's talk about what we had to do to bring a pipeline, a 48-inch pipeline from Wilsonville all the way to here, and the multitude of property owners.
Yeah, that was very expensive.
Very expensive, yeah. So, anybody?
All right. I, I think it's ridiculous to use this as a political tool to criticize staff. I think you guys have done a good job, these types of things, you never know how much they're going to be in advance. But it's important to understand that we've known that this was an obligation from the time we decided to put so-called Adams North in sooner than it had to go in. We, Chris was right. We wanted Adams North about as much as we wanted anything at that time. And I, I love Adams North or Langer Farms Parkway. I think it's great. I go to Home Depot and half the time that I used to get to Home Depot. But that, that, it needs to be mentioned that back when, when we were talking about this whole development, it, it was represented to us that that's the most expensive way to do it, is put in Adams North first. Because if we waited for Adams North and waited for the developer to do this in a, you know, in a more organic way, then Adams North would have gone in when Sentinel Storage goes out and, and the highest and best use of that land eventually goes in. And this, this, we would have never had to pay this at all. At least this reconfiguration, we would have had to pay it because it would have just been part of the development. But here we are having to reimburse the developer for, or the property owner, for the damage or whatever that we caused. And because we wanted that street so bad, and, and it's worth it because it's a great street. And, and staff heard nothing from us, but when are you going to get that done? And we knew that we were doing it the most expensive way, by doing it upfront. And so we have known about this for years, that we were going to have to do this. We've known about it for years. No one knew the amount. As soon as the amount was known, we were advised, that's when I want to know. I don't want to know play-by-play on every negotiation. I want to know when you get down to an amount, it was negotiated professionally and it's done. This isn't about whether we pay it. We've always known we were going to have to pay it. This is simply a fact that we have to have a council resolution to make a budget appropriation like this. That's what this is all about. It's not about staff, not about pine, closed doors, crap, none of that. It's, it's, we, staff cannot make this budget appropriation without us making a resolution. That's the only reason we're here. So let's, let's just call this what it is and get it done.
I have actually a question that Counselor Grant brought, brought forward in my mind, not to you, but brought forward to me, because he said, as soon as the amount was known, we were advised. Is that correct? Joe?
Well, it was actually November 21st, not the 18th, when we finally, when I got informed that we had landed on a number that both sides agreed to. Then it went on the future's council agenda. And that's how you were notified. Now, not everybody on council asked me what that was, the specifics of the supplemental budget. But that's how it was notified, that we'd have to do a supplemental budget related to the reconfiguration.
And I understand that in 2008, that we received a betterment, just, we were just talking about receiving a betterment in our last discussion about the Mandels. So I, I recognize that the city has obviously received a betterment by taking the land and making the road. My concern is the notice to the council. And so I just want to understand, is this the normal course, that if you received an application in mid-April for something this large, that's going to be this impactful, that staff would begin negotiations and not advise that they, that you were, that you were looking at this, that it was going to be coming to council, that we were going to be addressing it? Is this normal procedure?
Yes, it is normal. Because it is, as they said, the normal practice of doing business. Now, Mayor Middleton and, and you, Counselor Clark, have expressed your frustration at that with me. So it certainly caused me to think, if we do this again, of being more open and saying, hey, we have this coming. But part of the reason why this process was going on is, there is a separation between you as the policymakers in terms of being involved with this. I mean, think about who was involved with this, the person that's not sitting there, okay? And I have an obligation to protect my staff so they can do their job. And they did a great job on this. I'm very proud of them. I hear what the mayor said. You wanted to hear about this earlier. And, and as we do these in the future, that's something, as long as I'm sitting here, we're going to have to do a better job. Because you have felt like you didn't have all the information, and you were caught off guard. And that doesn't feel right. I, I understand what the mayor's saying. He's made it very clear to me. So, but up until this point, this is the way we do negotiations like this and right-of-way acquisition, all the time. So it, it's, it's something that, as I look back in terms of how to do it better, I would, I would probably do something a little bit different. But this is the normal way that we've always done this. It's not anything different than before. Mayor Middleton was not on council when this was done. So when Counselor Grant says, oh, we've always known about this, he wasn't on council at that time. So it's not like he can remember that because he wasn't here. So there are lessons to be learned here, in terms of how staff handle this and communicate to you as a council, but I can't turn back the clock. And I would still do the same thing in terms of letting my staff do their job. And that's really what I was trying to get them to do. Let them do their professional job, which is their technical review of going through that list. That's the answer.
And Joe, can I just add on to that and sort of validate that this is normal? I think you got emailed earlier today, the original resolution, sort of, sort of directing staff to proceed with negotiating easements and right-of-way acquisition. And there's a list of, of other resolutions for different right-of-way projects within that same vein. I don't know if you looked at them closely, but I went through each one of those today and just looked at them, and the language is almost exactly the same, where it's, you know, we're directing staff, you're setting the policy for staff to move forward on a road project, to move forward on that, and you're directing us to do that technical hard work. And then we go do it. And, and we don't necessarily communicate every step of the way, where we're at and what the process is. So it is very normal. You direct, you set the policy, direct us to go do something, and we do it. In this case, it required a supplemental budget.
Move, approve, resolution 2014-078.
A second. Your mic's not on.
I'm sorry, give the second.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? No. Do you have anything? Five, one. Do you have anything more to go on? I mean, any staff comments or anything tonight? Are you guys pretty well done?
My, 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 my question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Point of order, we're in council announcement.
I know. I'll do this, go ahead.
Let me finish this. Just a comment for the public and then also for the counselors. We have two recruitments going on for citizens. The Planning Commission has an open position, as you may recall. Sally Robinson will be joining the council, so her spot on Planning Commission is open. We've extended the deadline until December 31st of this month. So we really encourage folks and, as well as counselors, if you know people that might want to serve on the Planning Commission, we're looking for good applicants. And then the other committee, which also has a December 31st deadline, is, we're looking for people to serve on the Community Advisory Committee for the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan. And that's about a 14-month commitment, and they're only expected to meet about six times during that period. So that's another plug for more citizen involvement on that committee. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to council comments.
I just want to thank everybody for putting up with me for the last four years. I learned a lot. Some things I didn't want to learn. They got beat into my head a time or two. But it's really been a learning experience, something I'll take with me, and it's certainly going to make me a better person, learning how to deal with people, all kinds of people. I mean, I do that every day in my own job, but dealing with your community is, it's a whole lot different story because it hits you a little closer to home. So I want to thank Dave, Matt, Chris Anna, Bill, Linda, and new Dan for putting me up with, putting up with me.
I've been up with you a lot.
Thanks.
Well, yeah, I would like to just thank the staff that we have. We, we ask for it when we get elected, and boy, do we get it. But staff really, particularly with all the Walmart insanity, I think, I, but, but in other issues, you know, staff, I think, has taken abuse more than they deserved. And, but I don't want to just talk about that. I, I want to say that a lot of times when we politicians jump in front of a camera, people are thanking us for everything we do and all that, and it's the staff that, that did all the heavy lifting. And you look at a lot of the things that have happened in the 12 years that I've been on council, and there's a lot of great things that we've put in. And there's, there's some pretty great parks, Snyder, and, and there's, there's some pretty great things right around where we're sitting right now. And I think that, that we've had great city managers, including Joe and Jim Patterson. I think that, I wish Ross Schultz was here because he has a brilliant mind and brilliantly managed the urban renewal district that is, that is responsible for a lot of what we're thankful for in this town, and not just the urban renewal district, but a lot of things. And so we've done a pretty good job of getting pretty good city managers, and also assistant city manager, and, and really, it's pretty incredible, the great staff that we have. And I just hate seeing them criticized because, I mean, you know, people like Sylvia and Julia and Julie and, and Kristen, who I think she went home. She, there she is. Good job, Kristen. And, you know, that's why it makes it a little bit easier for us to do what we do. And Chris Crean also, thank you for everything he does. Hey, we rely on this stuff that Chris does. And that's really, if it weren't for the staff doing such a great job, it'd have been a lot harder for us to do really anything. And we really do rely on staff, and we sometimes make it tough on them. But I've appreciated everything about the staff. And it, I, I hope that when we see them on the street, we continue to thank them for what they do. And, and that's always going to be the case, as far as I'm concerned. That's really what's made it great. We should be proud of the staff we've got here. So that's what I have to say about my 12 years. Thank you all.
Well, it's been a great four years on council. I'd like to thank all our supporters and particularly staff sitting around here, looking at all the staff sitting in the room right now. It's amazing to see all the work that we did, and gave me a whole new insight into all the hard work they did. Everything Dave Grant just said about staff and all the hard work they accomplished and, and they, sleepless nights, like staying here this late. I look out, I see Jason Waters sitting out in the audience for who knows what reason, and you know, it's after 11 o'clock, and that's the kind of dedication. I've, I've been coming by here late, different nights in four years, and every once in a while, I see a different staff member leaving here at all hours of the night, or, or I see a light on super early in the morning, and it's just amazing. And to hear all the criticism and whatnot, it's just disheartening because I think folks that aren't intimately involved, and I never was before intimately involved, but they, they're not intimately involved enough to realize what's really going on and realize that staff is, is really getting all the heavy lifting done, like Counselor Grant said. But I've only been here for four years, and so Counselor Grant and Counselor Henderson have been here for a long time. Counselor King had been here for a long time in the past. And so you guys saw a lot in all your time, and in four years, it seemed like I saw a lot, but that's, pales in comparison to what you've seen. So anyway, thanks a bunch. It was a great four years, and good luck to the new council.
Thank you.
It's been an interesting first meeting for me. So that was a very hard decision. I still have my reservations about what was passed, but that's the way things work in our democracy. I want to compliment staff on how hard they work. Judy and Sylvia, and, you know, the staff that were here when I was in office the last time. I know they work very hard, and I appreciate everything that they do. I know they work very hard, and I appreciate everything that they do. I look forward to working with the new council. I think we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I think it'll be exciting. And I just hope that we don't have to stay as late every council meeting in the future. So, anyway, with that, I'll close my comments, since, thank you.
Not yet.
So, first, I just have to thank outgoing councillors for their sort of shape. I also wanted to give some information about an event that I don't quite have, and I placed it on my Facebook page if anyone wants to ask some additional information. But, on January 7th, the-
Sorry, thank you. So, on January 7th, so I did just thank the outgoing councillors, just so the camera knows. Okay. So, on January 7th, the Sherwood PAC at 6:30 is going to be having a presentation called Real Make-Believe. And it's going, it's going to be a talk about how the great jobs are a serious game of make-believe. And it looks incredibly interesting. They're going to have a great speaker, Dr. Tony Salvador, who's a senior engineer at Intel. And he's going to be talking about how, in the real-life world of work, that the minds that think outside the box are the ones that are making things happen. And so, I really recommend that anybody who can attends this event. Again, it is January 7th at 6:30 at Sherwood High School. So, I just wanted to give a shout out. I also wanted to, in the respect of time, since it is 11:10 PM, that I'm just going to forego what I, events that I have been on, been to. You can look at my Facebook to see the kinds of things that have been going on for representing Sherwood. And just say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to everyone.
35 turkeys.
Pardon?
I ran it. I know our run numbers, but I don't know what the final number is.
My understanding that they had a great giving gobble. I also would like to thank the outgoing councillors, Council Butterfield, Council Grant, and Council Langer. While we have not always agreed on everything, I think that we always came into the room with the opportunity to listen to opinions that are not just our own. And that we never made it personal. And I appreciate that. To serve the city for 12 years is a very long time. So, I think Council Grant, his commitment, I mean, his daughters were in grade school when you started. And now, they're both, well, one's on a mission and one's in college. So, that's a significant amount of time, as Council Clerk mentioned, away from your family or other hobbies or things that you might want to do. Council Butterfield, I have a special affinity for because of the 18 or 20 months that we spent working with Ankrum, who is our architect for the Cultural Arts Center. And I know, in addition to some of the compliments that people came up to Council Butterfield about his time, I'm sure he donated well more than 100 of his own personal hours for which he was not paid for electrical and mechanical consultation on the building, which no doubt saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars because we were three or four times at the table over budget. And each time, Bill had ideas on how to install something that was practical and not necessarily a high-end option that maybe somebody had recommended. So, I don't think we would have gotten that building at the budget that we have available to us, which is $4 million. Had Bill not served on there, we might have gotten to that number. But, I doubt we would have cut things that were practical as opposed to expensive items. So, for those people who don't know, we met every Thursday for the better part of a year with Kristen Schweitzer, with Bob Galati, with Tom Pesimer, in getting that building done. And, well, Bill may not have been interested in the color of the countertops. He certainly was interested in HVAC and, you know, where, where things were being piped in and piped out. And that made, you know, hardly any sense to me, but made perfect sense to him. And Council Langer, I also like to thank, serving, I've learned a lot from him about the development challenges that all developers go through in getting projects done in any city, things that I didn't, I wasn't aware of. And I think that we've made some great improvements in our community services, our community development division to improve customer service. Somebody used to say, "It's always great to have an attorney on council." Well, there are reasons for that. And in the same way, it could be great to have an accountant or a police officer or a contractor on council. And so, also, time away from family, which, you know, is a definite challenge. And then, lastly, regarding, we have, we'll have elections. We'll always have elections, maybe not every year, but we're going to have at least three elections in 2015. One in March, one in May, and then potentially, there's always a potential for September or November. And when I look at the canvassing that Sylvia has, that we voted for tonight, basically, we have 60% of our constituents voting and 40% not voting at all. So, we have 10,257 registered voters in Sherwood, and only 60% of them are voting. And I would certainly like to see more people get involved at the city in the openings that Joe talked about. But, I'd certainly like to see those 40% of people who live here and who are registered voters actually take a little bit of time and open their ballot and, and vote. I think it's fairly common across the United States. But, I think that there are other cities that had a lot higher voter turnout than ours with not nearly as many items on the ballot. If you think about all the council positions, the mayor positions, and the five charter amendments, it should have been spurring people to vote. And I just don't see the numbers representing that. And so, I would really like to know, you know, how we can encourage more people to vote and get people involved and get information out to them and do a better job of getting people out to vote and getting more of those 10,258 registered voters to cast a ballot. So, I think that's all I have. Now, the other thing is, Council Grant and I did a Cultural Arts Center tour, and it was fabulous to see actual walls up and buildings up. It's very exciting to see it a reality and not just a show, and to see the classrooms. And so, I want to thank staff for all the work they've done. Jason was there. And I think it's going to be a huge, great addition to our community. And I look forward to finding ways at the council and at Board and Commissions to help it be self-sustaining. So, that's what I have.
I had one more. It's so late, I feel incredibly ridiculous that I forgot to thank Mayor Middleton. Oh, I can't believe that I forgot to do that. But, anyway, I, I kind of, I think I'm in denial. I think I forgot because I thought he was still going to be here. So, I just wanted to thank Mayor Middleton for his service. It's been an absolute pleasure working with him. And he is going to be a very difficult act to follow. But, he has been fantastic with asking the hard questions. And he's been a wonderful mentor in keeping the feet to the fire and making sure that we are asking the questions and we are including all different kinds of people and opening those doors to the council chambers. And I just want to wholeheartedly thank him for his service. And I just really appreciate him, and I'm going to miss him. And I'm probably going to make him come here every once in a while and get him involved in something.
There's always appointment to a Board or Commission.
This is it for me. I'm so happy. It's just incredible. So, anyway, I want to thank everybody. I mean, obviously, we didn't get along all the time. But, with the new council coming in, you have the chance to come in with open minds, and you're not always going to agree, but disagree respectfully to each other. And always, please, try and meet together and let everybody know what's going on. Don't form little cliques. Stay together as a team, and that will bring you a long way. So, I want to thank you a lot, too. So, thank you very much, and everybody have a good night.
We're done?